One minute.
Minister Bright, you say you send me the program now?
Yes, sir. I'm trying to copy the program and send it to your...
Okay.
So we have two music for welcome address for the APM. You want us to sit down, you don't want to, right?
If any of you can play it from that side, no problem. You can play, you forward it to us so that we can play it from here.
We can play it, but let me send you this.
Targeted. They would have no problem identifying others who had been targeted, rightfully so, other ethnic minorities, but when it specifically came to Christians, it wasn't politically a good time for them to talk about it. And that's a huge problem. And the fact remains that ninety percent of global total Christian deaths occur on the African continent. And that's according to Open Doors, somebody that you had referenced earlier. So I want to ask all the witnesses, do you believe that the Tanubu administration is intentionally not taking the required actions to ensure the safety and security of... We could broaden it out for all ethnic minorities, but let's specifically address Christians as well throughout the country.
Minister, I send it to Akarawa, so this is...
Yes, thank you Congressman for your questions and your comments.
Okay, I promise.
Just to address the terror issue or the violence issue that you raised, Nigeria did get worse on the global index for terrorism over the past year. So it's quantitative, so it is intensifying. And the Fulani for the last twenty years have been being armed with automatic weapons by, according to scholars, Nigerian scholars, by cattle breeders who hire them. And so this is contributing to the uptake in violence as well. And you're... I've forgotten your question now.
Oh, just whether the Tanubu administration is sort of intentionally... Are they doing what is really required to ensure safety of their citizens?
Yeah, you know, on intent and what they intend to do, I've tried to bring out prominent voices in my testimony, in my written testimony, to... who believe that this is deliberate on the part of the government. There are others who feel that the government is just lax, but some feel that the government is complicit. And I saw that frankly in the Catholic Bishop's letter that was released recently that was referred to by me and the bishop about the fact that Islamic law of closing down, or at least somebody's interpretation of Islamic law, of closing down all schools in some of the twelve northern states to observe, forcibly observe Ramadan is... Part of the bishop's alarm at this is a sort of creeping introduction of Islam as the rule, law of the land, not only in those twelve northern states, but throughout the country. So I've heard that from a number of prominent voices, whether Catholic bishops or others, civic leaders, and even governors of some of the southern states, central states.
I'm going to skip over if you don't mind, Mr. Perkins, to the bishop and just what is your take on the Tanubu administration? Are they actively trying to protect that or are they allowing it and turning a blind eye?
I think, my own opinion, the government certainly has good intention, but there's no implementation. And I think it's simply because they want to be politically correct not to offend any particular group of persons. And so that's why the inactivity is taking place and people are feeling emboldened to continue to do what is going on. And the failure of the security forces to apprehend those who are involved is a clear sign that they don't want to just... everybody said that people are dying. So if the government wants to take action, then we do.
And you've been very generous, Mr. Chairman. I do also want to hit on one other thing. The, you know, this hearing is specifically about Nigeria, but given the expertise and the people that we have, love to hear a little broader view. And I had the opportunity to recently sit down with Bishop Dennis Nthumbi, who is the African Director of Israel Allies Foundation. We talked at length about the systematic persecutions of Christians and Jews that are happening throughout the continent and the rise in antisemitism there. And Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'd also like to post the chairman, I'm sorry, the bishop's report on accounts of widespread violence and destruction of churches and other religious sites that have been happening. So I'd like to submit that for the record here. In fact, the bishop is here with us today in the back and applaud him and his work as well. But getting back to the specifically Nigeria, we have seen a rise throughout the African continent. We're talking specifically though about the tools that we have in Congress. And I'm curious from each one of the witnesses, is the CPC, this designation, is that necessary? And is it warranted for Nigeria right now? Or is this some sort of knee-jerk reaction?
Well, I think it's warranted. We can't fudge the facts. We need the truth to come out. This is one of the worst situations in the world, as you know, for Christians. And the law is clear. If the government engages in or tolerates egregious violations of religious freedom, which the government certainly is, regardless of whether it's deliberate or not on their part, I think that we must do that. And it does put pressure. It's... Governments do not like to be on the shortlist of the world's worst persecutors. It is a platform for beginning to reassess American policy on how we deal with this partnership that's increasingly uncomfortable and untenable as they become more terror-ridden and their religious communities are attacked relentlessly without, with impunity. So yes.
I'll put you down as a yes?
Put me down as a yes.
And I don't want to necessarily have to go back over as to why that was removed. My, our job here today is that, does this administration need to reapply the CPC? Mr. Perkins?
I would say yes. If I can provide some context, during my time as chairman of USRF, we didn't randomly give out CPC labels that we just wanted to go after a particular country. In fact, during my time, we worked to take countries off our watch list.
That is the goal, right?
That is the goal. This is a tool. This is a tool. We used it. We actually took Sudan off the list. I traveled to Sudan. Unfortunately, things have changed there in the last few years. But we were very hopeful in this CPC status was a tool. They wanted to get it off so that they could have access to international banking. They didn't want to be on that list. It worked. We worked to get Egypt. I met with President El Sisi multiple times to get them off the watch list, and they were making great progress.
It's kind of amazing. You look at some of the lists of countries like Egypt that have been on this. And the fact that Nigeria and its current situation isn't seems a little stunning to me.
It does. That's why I do think it needs to be on the list and utilized as a tool to address both the religious freedom issue and the underlying issues.
I've taken way too much time, but Bishop quickly and Ms. Onabugu. Do you believe Nigeria should be on this designation?
My response would be, thank you, but my response would be yes. One, because CPC designation is not punitive. That is one. It's corrective, so that you'll be able to see what...
Not punitive to the citizens specifically, unlike a lot of other sanctions that may be.
Exactly. It's not punitive. It's supposed to be corrective so that you'll be able to realign yourself with the global practices like human rights violations, we need to, you need to know. And you have to, because Nigeria is not an entity. You can't say it just because it's a kind of domestic affair. Domestic affair involves people's lives. They are going. So the world cannot watch that countries are just, citizens are just being killed. So I would think if we do this, that helps to bring the financiers of these programs or these violations to book first. The ammunition these terrorists or Fulanis will carry along is not manufactured in Nigeria. It's bought somewhere. Those local boys in the bush don't have money to buy those ammunition. Who supplies them? Who equips them? So if this is done, certainly...
This meeting is being recorded.
So for me, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that question. Making a designation is what you've said is beyond my institutional purview. What I provide is more policy-focused, non-partisan biased research, ensuring that the facts speak for itself. I'll leave that to the committee to make the designation. But as we look at the research in Nigeria and on Nigeria, it is important that we understand that Nigeria is not your typical nation-state. This is a state that is where identities are formed along lines of ethnicity, religion. And so at the end of the day, those that may be, maybe trying to hold accountable may not actually see themselves as accountable to the citizens. So this is why I say it's important for us to take a look at the research, take a look at the data, to make informed decisions. Thank you.
So is that an official pass? No, not an opinion as to whether we ought to have the CPC?
As I said, it's beyond my institutional purview.
I would argue, Mr. Chairman, that it's a policy debate and discussion that we are having. But with that, I've taken a lot of time and I appreciate that to my colleagues as well. I yield back. I'd like to now recognize Ms. Jai Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Eka State Admin, are we good to go? Are you ready? Are your teams ready? Can we start?
We are ready, sir. We can start. This is Mr. Osai. I am the moderator of today's Eka State.
All right, so when I'm done with the anthem, I'll hand over to the moderator. Okay, so here we go. And then, Honorable Osai, please. Aside from you, who and who has a role to play on your program so that the person can be co-hosted?
Okay, the Administrator of the state and the secretary.
Where is the secretary? Co-hosted already. Where is the secretary?
Secretary, identify yourself. Honorable Didi, I repeat, identify yourself, sir.
I'm here. Good evening. I'm the secretary of the Eka State.
Yeah, we see you now. All right, so we go. All right, we start with the anthem.
Land of the rising sun we loathe and cherish. We love and hope and all our brave heroes. We must defend our lives or we shall perish. We shall protect our hearts from all our faults. But if the price is that far we hold dear, then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a consecrated nation. Oh, Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Stealing our blood will count our freedom. The waving sun that which and boldness are free shall always be a blood of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible landscape we pass. When we are forced, the wounds of battle to heal. We shall remember those who guide the mass. Then shall our children feel the glorious song of victory with God almighty. Oh, God, protect us from the hill pitfall. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to hear the human whisper. To give and not to count the costly chain. Let's all rule to serve with resoluteness. To make this sky a land of righteousness.
A minute silence to the fallen heroes of Biafra. The time starts now. We mourn our heroes' pass. We celebrate them. And those fighting on to see that the United States of Biafra is fully liberated and our recognition is achieved. You say, you say, you say... Welcome, welcome, welcome to Eka State De facto Town Hall Meeting with the BRGAPM and the entire people of Biafra. Stay blessed as we watch the beautiful nature of Eka State. The moderator of the day, Honorable Bright, over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Honorable Akarawa, the Minister of Information, Media and Communication of the Biafran Republic Government in Exa. My name is Minister Osai Bright, a member of this government. And I want to welcome everyone to Eka State. You are very, very welcome. In Eka, there is something that we especially do. We normally give a oshiba to all the participants, all the welcome guests to the house. So you are very, very welcome. And today, we have forwarded our activities of a distant to the Minister of Information. And I want to start by saluting our leaders. Mazi Namdekanu, may God bless him. And of course, our Prime Minister Simon Ekbanjoku, who is still under investigation by the Finnish authorities. I, Eka people, thank him for the path that he have opened for every one of us, the path that is leading to our future. I want to thank all the cabinets of the Biafran Republic Government in Exa. The special greeting from Eka people goes to the Ministry of Finance and the biggest ministry in this system, the Ministry of Information, who have been working tirelessly both day and night to ensure that the fight and the voice of Biafra is being acknowledged everywhere in the world. I want to thank and appreciate the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and the Ministry of Security Administration and all the departments and the ministry inside the Biafran Republic Government in Exa. Eka people are very appreciative for your sacrifices and for everything that you are doing to ensure that we secure a better future for our people. We really thank you and for making yourself available to work for your people through the Biafran Republic Government in Exa. We want to specially thank our acting Prime Minister, Minister Ogenkere, Ugechukunkere. Chukuki Kabiam, I bless you. We, the Eka people, understand the challenges that you've been through in a very short time because of people who do not understand and they don't want to understand, as well as others who have agendas, interests, and those who come to finish what they mandated to do, which was to bring down the Biafran Republic Government in Exa so that it won't be able to liberate our people. It's on the effort from people like you. All the activities has been very fruitless. This has shown Eka people that you are very capable and very determined to do this job. With what the Eka people have seen in the United States, the effort that the Biafran Republic Government in Exa is making, ensuring that our cries and our pledges are being heard by authorities from those area. We say, may the Lord continue to bless you, guide you, keep you safe and give you more wisdom who prevail through you. Eka people are giving their utmost support to you, sir, Ogenkere. And before we proceed, I'd like to welcome all the Eka State administrators, executives. And Eka State executive, as a matter of fact, also face challenges. And but we've been very determined and working so hard to ensure that we... That we conquer everything that we try to stand as a hindrance. Because what we are doing is the work of God. And we are very glad to be part of the chosen to do the work of God, which is to secure Biafra in our time. In the Eka State, we have a beautiful, very, very beautiful counties. In the Eka State, we have... Just a second, please. So in the Eka State, we have the Eka State's government counties and headquarters, which is Epo, Igboke, Igboakere. And Igboakere, Igboke, where the headquarters is, Ake. And the headquarters of Igboakere is Udomo, Udomo Di. And our capital for Eka State is Igbo Do. The headquarters in Igbo Do is at Ekwoma. We have Umunede, Ibirri. You know, we say Ibirri, Eka, to let live and let live, Ibirri. And in, we have Ute, Ohaize. The headquarters is Ogada. We have Okbo, Otulokbo. The headquarters in Otulokbo. We have Eboka. And the headquarters is Agbobi. We have Aniofu. The headquarters is Obio. We have Eka Metro Police. The headquarters is Boji Boji. We have Awua, a former Abavo. And the headquarters is Abavo Central. Those of you who are hearing Awua and you are very surprised, you shouldn't be. You may have to ask your parents, what was Abavo called before the name changed? The name is Awua. Awua means to be, to become, to be enlightened, sort of. So we have Obijie, Akumaze. The headquarters is Akumaze. We have Ezechima. And the headquarters is Iseluku. We have Awua. The headquarters is Owuiibu. And we have Isimini. And the headquarters of Isimini is Akukuibu. We have Azagba. The headquarters is Isilazaga. We have Eka. Okay, that's all we have in Eka State. And this land is a very beautiful land. You are very welcome.
Ito State Government anchor, county's headquarters.
Of course. So that's where you are today in Eka Land. So thank you so very much for coming. And I welcome all the Eka representatives and all our well wishers and brothers and sisters, the citizens of Biafra who have come to... who have come to Burundi Kama today. So noriconuma, konodo, join your eternity. And we're moving straight to the... So we move straight to the next item on the agenda. On the agenda, we have the arrival of dignitaries, the opening prayers, and the welcome address by the Ika State Administrator, introduction of the executive, the moderator, and the breaking of kula knot and taking of kula knot. Two songs to welcome our APM and the APM speech in the Ika State Town Hall Meeting. And the financial support for APM's remarks, questions to APM, and answers from APM. And then closing remark by the Administrator. We hope that this meeting today will be very successful. With this, I say welcome to all the dignitaries that are here, all the medias and the press and the Biafran Republic Government in Exa media. I would not forget my people on the X space who are there holding that outpost to ensure that evil will not fly in our time. People from all the X, I salute you. It's your one and only university. And I'm very humble, and I thank you for what you are doing for the Biafran Republic Government in Exa. So Minister Akarawa, I would like to move straight to the opening prayer. Are we carried, sir?
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't know if I should open my mic. What do you, sorry, my camera? What do you think?
That depends on you, if you are comfortable where you are.
Okay. So some people are saying that Ika people, they don't want to show themselves. They are happening like an animal. So we are not an animals, and we are not afraid of our enemy, because our enemy must bow. We are not going to bow to them. So because of this, I'm going to pray in my Ika dialect. So chukukikabiama, we thank you. Iya pammy, ye yekeli, Iya jefaima, igi yene ka, igi ibaki kome, onode tan. Iba kiko metan ho meeting, ogere umonke chuku, ichoni we, tonale we, idoma biya to geda. Akoa we, yegba ma uchi onhao, kuweki jimema lewe, ozorema. So yahai, ogimele tan ona, nde Biafra ile, ilalile, iladi hawo word. Iba kiko mele tan ne, biya dis, obakon de ka, enlakbo, eka tan ho meeting tan ne. So that is o yegba ma uchi, buchesi here from Mekbe, igi ku, kalia, ikidore naima. Ogere nde ka, ki gi juajuju, Jenny, o nishoki kendi Biafra, oketan. So that is o mane, ihe remele, ibe ije ko. Mane onene, the future, eimoo, ihu, eluri, ihu, eimoo, elime Biafra. Yasoo di, ezigobibi, awule ya, hodo, ime, alian. Because alian, ayagale through a lot of things. So because of that, chukukiki, ainokboku efanshi. Ile tu obakota ni tu yeka, nuchedan, yudume, yaya mami here. Yen, udiri wisdom, mayere kwa, igi, memo obakon tan ozo, oye fow, ega ihu, magi, magi. So ndo to all the cabinets of Biafran Government to yeka, to APM, to Akarawa, Sun News, our media, lebu insensi, to yeka. And si yeye amami here, ikidi, iso obakon tan, iso, ega ihu. Not to the government in the Ika State, to yeka, makana obakon e, biya tan, ka wenyefo, obeni, oray, ogachani huh, omo makay dacha. So ihe leke buwe, isemoku le, le ihu hem, igotale ni, si chukukuyu, jato kwa, iwepo ime, ibe tan ne. So ndo to this meeting, to yeka, yane fong chukuka biama, yane fong wa Jesu Christi. Yane fong molori alian, yane fong, ndine dine dine dien we, ibiguale, no melawe, kwadumalen ezo, eino zo ma biritan. So iweka kwadumaze, mo ezo ma biri chuku, si, ipudine ime yuzey ya, yane fong wa Jesu Christi. You say, you say, you say. So the next item on the agenda, which I, on my side, I will consider the first one, which would be the welcome address by the Ika State Administrator. The Ika State Administrator, are you available to to give your welcome address? The Ika State Administrator. Administrators' welcome speech is needed at this point. Your Prime Minister, if I'm not getting it right, you help me, because...
I'm there with you, I'm there with you, I'm there with you.
Thank you, sir.
Was he knocked out of the Zoom?
He's out of the Zoom.
The Ika State Admin, where are you? Raise your hand, please. The Ika State Admin, raise your hand, raise your hand. We can't find you yet. Probably Network may have done one of their funny vibes on your phone. Please do well to indicate. Okay, we have, there's another one that says the Ika Administrator. Ika Administrator, is that you? Unmute, unmute, unmute. Ika Administrator.
Thank you very much. I've been struggling to unmute myself.
Okay. Why, sir?
Minister Celeste, the acting Prime Minister, most honorable man known as Ogenkere. I greet you this evening. I greet every minister in the house, the Minister of Information, the Minister of Finance, the Minister of Security, and every minister in the house. Welcome to Ika State. I also extend greetings to all the chairman of different committees that are fully involved, partaking this great move for our freedom. You are welcome to Ika State. I also extend the greetings to our noble and regent administrators of various states in the whole land that are present in this wonderful meeting. You all are welcome. I also welcome every member of Ika State, all the citizens, the commissioners for this noble meeting today. I am highly overwhelmed with high joy that we, the Ika States, are here in this space, holding meeting for the Ika States. So you all are welcome. Without waste of time, the struggle has been on before us, and we have been working since 2014, 2024, during so we're in Ika State. And it happens that at a time in November and then December in 2024, we encounter a very strong challenge. That challenge has put away the former admin the light that we are seeing today and realization of this very pursuit. Also the secretary. So we start looking for a neutral ground to start. You know, it was a very big storm on us. So we started all over again. We start getting back ourselves the end of December and then to this moment. We have made some impact speaking and talking to others, new, different people concerning the Ika State and the struggle that we are in. We are making the evangelism to reach in all the counties you have already heard about. And we are making move to villages from time to time to see that people join us in this struggle. And today, I'm glad to see that we have already make a reasonable record since January. Today, as we are holding this meeting, most of them that are here, I know that some of us who do not have Android phone could not join us, and some may later join us. They can attest to it that we are making some impact in our state. Once again, we are so glad to have you, our APM, and all the ministers in the house. And I know that with your visit today, Ika State will receive another grace of growth, numerically and otherwise. And with your visit, the organization, the body, the states, we receive a different kind of development in all aspects, in all departments. And it will give us a sense that we are one, working together, and that we are not alone in this struggle. So you are welcome today, and it is my prayer that our stay in Ika State here today shall bring a history that have never been before. And that at the end of it, it will become a talk and a stepping stone to every other states to see that the liberation come very fast. Thank you very much. Once again, you are welcome to Ika State. It is my earnest prayer that at the end of the day, we all we recognize the blessing of God from Ika State. Thank you, and God bless you while we continue with the meeting. Welcome, and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ika State Admin, for your opening speech. Thank you so much. Please, before we continue, if you need your cameras on, put it on now, please. If you need your cameras on, turn it on now. If you need your cameras on, you can turn it on now, please. Turn on your cameras if you need them on. Turn on your cameras if you need them on. Turn on your cameras if you need them on. Okay, we continue. Honorable Bright, back to you, to your program.
Thank you. Thank you, my minister. Thank you very much, the Administrator of Ika State Government, for that wonderful speech of yours. It's very encouraging. We know that you are a great leader, and we pray that God will continue to strengthen you and give you more wisdom to continue partaking Ika State. And yeah, so they I don't know if the secretary have one or two words to true before we move to the next agenda. We are moving very fast. And we are venturing item five, item four, yes. So Honorable Michael, you have any speech to make? You have anything to say to the Biafran government or to Biafran people? Or proceed?
Am I coming out?
Yes.
Am I coming out? Okay. Okay, I greet all Biafran present today at this meeting. I greet all other states that is joining us from everywhere, you, every corner of the world you are joining us from for supporting our state, Ika. This is the only state we have. And this is the only state we are building, we are praying for, we are fighting for. Biafra is the only state, only country we are fighting for. We want to achieve that by supporting ourselves, by assisting ourselves. Our administrator have spoken a lot, have said a lot of things. So I think we should keep moving, keep fighting, keep supporting, keep supporting each other, keep supporting ourselves individually. We back at home, we know what we are going through, and we know what people in Asprara are doing for us to survive all these things. We thank you all. I think I need to stop here so that the program can move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Honorable Ministers of Information, Vamvamvamakarawa. I think that we are entering a very more serious item now, and which says a breaking of kula and taking of kula knot. So this moves us to another segment of this Town Hall Meeting. You people know that Town Hall Meeting is very essential, especially in a struggle like this. And we are looking for, talking, our APM cannot come to Ika State, and we said, okay, APM, welcome, welcome with ordinary mouth and let him go like that without giving anything to, you know, cool himself down. And this is very, very important. When you come to Ika people's house, we do serve food. I have seen that attribute also from our brothers, our families in the southeast. When you come to our house, we prepare a very special soup for you with enough meat. Ika people like to eat with too many meat inside their soup. So we hope that what we are serving our APM today will not be different. And I would like to I would like to welcome Ika State again Administrator to, we call it if you're Gishi. So I would like the Ika State Administrator to open mic and give our APM, please.
Okay. Thank you very much, Minister Bright, and all the wonderful ministers and our most noble APM. Welcome once again. With the I'm with you.
Yes, I think before, before you walk Gishi, I think we have to play one music before you continue, if you don't mind.
Okay. Anyele we no. The ball is still in your court then. Yes, oh yeah, the corner one, okay. Minister Bright, we are waiting for you.
Yeah, give him some minutes, I think he's going to pick a Bluetooth device.
Oh yeah, the one I work there. And when I cheer in the, oh we have to know where. Before you, I one more game.
Okay. So admin, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm with you.
Okay, uh thank you. Thank you. Admin, I was going to play this award, this thing, but you may proceed with your work again now, please.
Okay. Ibañalwane. Yamanahingwa nyobia. Onwa kaini lewe. Oge ya o nyeché. Um. Our A P M. Our. Honorable ministers in the house. Um the ordinary of Ikar people. Is to present a kula. Um. With me. Is a kula in my hands. For our A P M to work on him. And uh. The Ikar State. Who I'm speaking for now. Is using thirty thousand naira to reach the kula from rolling away from the plate. So. The Ikar State is using thirty thousand eje to weight the kula. Um my very self speaking. I'm using uh twenty thousand eje to weight the kula from uh also falling away from the. Plate. So that it will not ruin unnecessarily. Um. Uh from here, I will hand over to Minister Bright to continue so that we can start weighing our kula. One after the other. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, admin. Um. Thank you very much, Mister Akbarawa. And all the people here. Admin, thank you for that uh breaking of kula knot. I think that's a very wonderful way of breaking kula knot. I was looking for a more epic way to make this breaking of kula knot special, but I think. Yeah, actually, okay. Okay, thank you. Give me some seconds. Perfect. So you know, when you are moderating in a car land and they have broke the kula knot, you cannot just. Just go take kula knot or something, you must also garnish the kula knot. Um so me, I am also giving twenty K a J. I repeat, I'm giving twenty K a J. To support the administrators breaking of kula knot. And uh. As God continue to bless Biafran people. And normally people also do something during breaking of kula knot. I don't know if brothers from Ikar they are. With me on this one. If not, we'll proceed to. The next agenda immediately. So. We have uh.
University. There. Like. Eben onyoko, kika namame, namame bo noyoko.
Is it killi?
Eben ono yoko, kika namame bo neyoko, you know, admit.
You know, university, oh oh yeah, like it's a one.
Omo, omo Biafrali, ekile mono.
You see?
Hmm.
University. University. Oh yeah, I'm okay, oh.
I'm way above, wayka.
He, 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 he.
Um.
Okay, okay, okay. Mano, mano, we, we, we.
La la, ne kankuku, ne, ebo neyoko, namame bo no bukeni. Um. Ekile, ekile mono, omo Biafrali. Um sichukuyano, ye nonoli. Oh yeah, lenzile. Idjenle Bia tan, inhere remma. Ya kaya kodi, mua. Um elabiane, oha etan. Esu enonya weho ge, wehendo. Um idjenhe, imweni weni, ey racho. Eh, esenene, ekone. Iyo kodi, esenene, ey imweni heko, ey racho. Ne mori aneka, yoko de tibu ekon. Eh, esenyali, iyo kodi me, eh ke gi mweni, ey racho. Ozo, nozo, like, okini, oga rekugeni, ne, eh, se mori aneka, ra koku ne, ya. Ebele, ebu chilaka, abo leliya baile, ebo le, P M, ejele, ebo ne, wejene, ma kihere ma, yoko de me, imweni, imweni. Ebo ne, ba eusi, ome nozo, oki, we ba eki na nozo, reko ra koku. Eh, se mori aneka, alibi, alika, dumewo, mori aneka, Biafralumewo. Ebe ma zinamdekanore tan. Eh, se mori aneka, ya dumewo. Ya dumewo, ndio, ndio, ne, ose ne ne. Ne, ne, oh, ya, ponida, iba poa. Mori aneka, ya bueli. Ebe P M, mori, oha etan. Eh, ba, oh, eh, iko ni ba. Ande kona, unkondone. Eseneye, kono, da poa. Se bo, ne bo, ne wa, ale, wa, ale, new. Wa, ebo, neo. Eh, esenene, wele chani, enya yoko de buesi. Nde, eseneye, kono, da noa, aban opoa, iban ore. No, eh, here, ma, eh, kono, da, ebo, repoa. Eh, eseneye, me, kono, da, ebo, wa, wa, linkere poa. Mori aneka, dumewo. Mori, anibiafralumewo. Eh, he ona, ebu chine, sa, yoko da, ne. Oze, egi mweni, eh, egi cho, imweni, weni, eh, kono, da, keni. Eh, se maneka, ya dumewo, anibiafralumewo. Alwan, alwan.
He said.
Eh, jim, si, tal, uh, fjordi, ordin, alika, ekile mono.
Hello, hello. You can one, yeah. Hello, hello, hello. You just, okay.
Yes.
Hello, hello.
Hello, I'm one day. Hello, it's one more.
I'm one.
No.
Thank you.
No.
We, we, we have, we have one hand up. So those that also want to pick kula or support the kula break in place, the floor is open. The floor is open, the floor is open. Um Victor Nonsu, over to you, your hand is up, support the kula knot, pick your kula. Thank you. Amute yourself, sir. Victor Nonsu. Victor Nonsu.
Eh, we, eh, we, wo. Eh, we, eh, we, wo, eh, we, eh, wo, eh. Ndi ka. Ekile kwe mono.
No.
Mono, yabiya.
Eh, for you, eh, was I.
Eh, oh, eh, for, eh, for, so, um. Eh, for, so, um, the time. Oh, eh, ya, oni, ayapu, ah, one, oh. Ayapu, ah, one. Yamanene, nem, ya, wo, nika. Let the morning go. Hmm, let the morning alone. But kike, no, na.
If, 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 I'm mistaken, though. Correct, eh.
Job, by, certainly.
Correct, eh, mistake, eh, man, ne, ne, wo, nika, ne di, wo, nyoro, and then, ne.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Job, ba, job, ba, ife, job, ba, ife. Job, ba, ife.
Yes, yes, hey, bros.
And hey, this talk, don't be your talk now. Alan, no, so make it talking, own thing.
Eh, ba, ba, at the, at the correct time, he ma, he make one mistake.
He de use money, they talk. Alan, he de use money, they talk. If you want correct, they go use money, correct, ah, mo.
Eh, for, so, um. Eh, for, so, um. Bela de sweet me, woto, woto. Bela de sweet me. Thank you very much. Ekile kwe mono, alwan. Nem, wo, nika. Nkindi, nlegi fifty eje ma, tan. Aqua, eh, eh, we, ogi. Okay, man, inka, inka, inke, ke, hesi, kwa, aso, because he very, very happy. Ni, inhere, lai, le, ne. Nchoni, more of this. Because defense of our land is a task. Ya kaya ke, ne. Inhere, lai, le, me, tan. Ya kaya ke, me. Eh, gi, defend the align. Nem, lele, dem. Well, eh, irika. Ekile kwe mono. Nlegi fifty eje ma, eh, we, ogi, kike, no, na. Maybe later, inka, biya, inka, biya, asa, aso. Ekile kwe mono, dalono, thank you.
There, wo, thank you.
America, America.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We come to, good the number. Good the number, over to you, sir. Amute yourself.
Yeah, greetings. Greetings, fellow Biafrans. The two, uh, A P M. Honorable ministers. Cabinet members, Biafrans, all over the world, I greet you. Those of you who joined this great dislocation today, thank you so much for doing this. And I say more grace to her, boo. Thank you for what you are doing for Biafran people. Ikar State, thank you so much for your good work. Thank you for uh your efforts. And I wish to say uh more grace to her, boss. We need to do more. We need to do more. This point in time, uh we have seen what is going on in our land. We need to do, create more awareness. Uh like uh when the uh administrator said, uh made his speech. He said the, the challenge we encountered, actually, that challenge really, really uh did something uh. And I would thank God for the men and women, the patriotic men and women, youth. That shows that the government of Biafra is built on a solid rock. I was talking to somebody today, I say, yes. That our enemy have hired the, the highest crackers on this world to, to hack into our, our government. Uh but they are unable to do so. That is a fact. Uh when I remember that, uh it gives me joy that uh we have people who can build a government that uh. Uh the enemy couldn't penetrate the, our database. Even our sites for donation, all those things, it is a very, very solid achievement. And I'm happy about that and I wish to say more grace to her, boss, all the cabinet members and our A P M. And my leader, Mazinamika, and our Prime Minister, I can't thank you enough. I did know that you, you can never uh change from what you stand for and I. Good number can never change. We are going to stand with you, come with me. So thank you. Are we sup, uh take kula notes with um thirty eje ma? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mazin, good the number, thank you. Please support um the kula breaking. Support the kula breaking of Ikar State. Come and pick kula, come and pick kula, answer your name, answer your family name. Represent your state. Represent your region. Come and pick kula, please. Chibuchi, oh, yes, eh, Ibane. Chibuchi, over to you. Amute yourself, Chibuchi. Chibuchi, over to you. Your hand is up.
Hello. Greetings, friend, uh, someone coming at life.
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, my honorable A P M. Yeah. This isn't of uh Ikar State. Congratulations. I'm very much happy. In a day like this. Thank God, uh, that uh, no matter what enemy tried, they could not succeed. Therefore. They did all they could to stop the struggle. But God never lies. I'm very, very much happy. So not to make it too long. I'm supporting uh the kula knot from Ibane State, I said, I said, I mean, with two thousand. Eighteen. Thank you, God bless you.
God bless you, sir. Thank you.
Please, let the, let the, eh, the admin, please forward the, the account. From the financial directors that are able to make the transfer. Thank you.
Understood, Ibane State, right?
Ibane State, Ibane State.
Thank you very much, Ibane State.
Take a treat, take note. Take note of all. Thank you, thank you. All right, we go to. Great. Great, your hand is up, over to you. Great, your hand is up, over to you, great. You have the mic?
Thank you so much. Am I coming, uh, clear?
We can hear you, but remove your earphone because the voice is going very low.
No, I'm not using the earphone, I'm using system. But I hope I'm coming clear. I'm, I'm okay now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, good evening. Um, I A P M, good evening, Minister of Information. And uh.
I went to the side to raise hand.
Go ahead, great, go ahead. Keep relaxed, stand by.
Thank you so much, uh, the Ikar State admin and executive. And other protocol of uh speaking to you in a boy state. Uh we are sincerely happy. Um how uh Ikar State will be able to achieve their goal, their saints. With God, all things are possible. When we see that it's not possible, God always come into make it possible. And it will be a lesson to other states that have not done their own. If a casted can come up and uh do this a great, wonderful uh visit. I believe there's no any state that will give it a nice kiss. I sincerely happy how things is doing. And what we have not do before. I think this is the first time that uh even the time P M is. Uh this is the first time that Ikar State is hosting uh their town hall meeting. We are much happy that uh. All admins are here. What we are doing, oh, in, rude, in, aban, also. And um on behalf of Ibane State, uh, we are picking the kula notes. Uh some of five thousand. So thank you so much. And God bless.
Thank you so much. Eh, boy. Thank you, thank you, great, thank you. Put the number, your hand is up again. The number over to you.
Uh, yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. Actually, um, I am uh from Odumegu State and this payment will be made tomorrow and I will send the. Receipt to minister for information and communication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We need more hands up. Come and pick kula. Represent your state. Support Ikar. Honorable Adazion, over to you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you, ma'am.
Okay.
You have co-host, ma'am. You can start your camera if you are comfortable.
All right. Um. I will. Take this opportunity to say good day. Good morning, good afternoon, and good evening to everyone. Uh, good evening, uh, A P M. Minister. Minister of Information. The deputy, I don't know who are who, all the ministers. Uh. Let me see. I won't call everybody's name, but um I went. Let me see, I won't call everybody's name, but um I went to. Uh Baptist Girls Abor, that's where I had my high school. So this is part of my people. So um I have to, yes, I have to present. Yeah, I went to Baptist. Uh Marymount was our sister school, Beno, um Wenoba was our brother's school, all that. So some of you that are past um. Students on that location, I'm just saluting every one of you. I'm going to support my people here with um thirty ajema. Thirty ajema. Okay?
Thank you ma'am, thank you.
Yes, but I don't know, Minister Sonny, is it, are we, we are doing over here, do you wanna, you want me to do it in a J?
No, which one is, whichever one is comfortable for you.
I do thirty ajema to support my people down. Um Abor, to be precise.
Thank you ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you ma'am, that's you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you appreciate.
Okay.
I hear you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you ma'am, I attended Baptist aside school too.
Oh you do?
Yes ma'am.
You did, okay, okay. Yes, um it used to be really good school then, I don't know about now, what's going on.
Exactly.
Yes. Okay now, I'll, I'm here, I'll be watching.
Thank you ma'am, thank you.
Only the jazz school, no one even know the American language.
Don't worry, Chief Flash, we are going to do school reunion, don't worry, we go do school reunion.
Who, who APM is, who are not Asho Bodoibo? Amabo. Some amas are going to Abor.
When all the ex-boys and ex-girls go gather, we do school reunion.
Hmm. Done.
Right, we have um, Namag, your hand is up, over to you.
A very wonderful good evening to the wonderful people of Bia France. And greet you all in the name of God. I, it's, it's supposed to be my SA that would, that's supposed to be here, and do the presentation for Aludo. But because it's in the village, the network keep on kicking him out. So you have mandated me to come here. On behalf of Aludo States. We are donating thirty five thousand AJ. The Aludo is donating twenty thousand AJ as a state. The SA is donating ten thousand as the SA. And my humble self is giving five thousand AJ. Thank you so much, people of uh Eka, for this opportunity you have given us. At the same time, I want to invite people to Aludo Town Hall Meeting on Sunday. God bless you all.
Thank you, thank you Aludo, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Very much, we appreciate you my brother.
Thank you. Alright, we come to Evangelist Precious, over to you. Evangelist Precious, unmute yourself, your hand is up.
Okay. Am I coming?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay.
It's pressure, but this is breaking of color not too.
Eh, my video. No.
Yeah, start your video, start your video.
I started, it's not on.
It's okay now, we can see you.
Okay, it's okay. Mwenika, chineke yegora angosi onwo, I'm very, very happy, ah, I won't read you mobile. Kaidoseka, chineke yeneka. Bitin, ah, man, I won't read you mobile, chineke so mane, Alwane. Chuku yegora. And the one. Oh, only the, it's the only one, we better agree on it. Cause onu, 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 eh, onu yalou.
Yes.
Um, I am sending a paper to our honorable APM. Good evening, good morning, good afternoon sir. All our warriors, honorable Marzi Oni Akarawa, God bless you. Eh, our honorable Marzi Raffel. God will bless you all. Honorable Sister Betty. God will bless you, you two are doing great. All our sisters that always come at us, at in a S handle, with Twitter handle. Thank you very much for your good work. We are happy, and God is happy, with God most surely give us victory in this journey. So I am going to support my breaking of color for our APM with twenty ajema. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, our precious evangelist, thank you so much. Thank you. We come to Mebe Eforma, over to you. Mebe Eforma, over to you.
Yeah, uh Minister of Information. Um. Uh good evening to our APM. Uh greeting to all the Briggy cabinets. Good evening, the citizens of uh Eka State. Yeah, on behalf of uh my state, Alanso State. We are picking color with our APM, with the sum of uh five thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Alanso, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh we come back to Victor Nanso, your hand is up again, over to you.
Yes, thank you very much. You see, today is, has been, this day has been a very long day that I have been waiting to see. And I really want to give kudos to uh my APM. And kudos to the hosts of uh today's uh program. And I want to say that uh in case we don't know, I want to remind us that IKA. Especially today's uh um town hall meeting, I want us to know that. Uh, um, the whole IKA is bleeding. We all can remember what happened, how the Fulani collabo with the Jandja with terrorists, Nigerian terrorist states. You know, you know, uh took us unaware, you know, and uh, and we all saw the attack. So, and because of that reason. I'm very, very happy to see this gathering today. So without wasting, wasting much of our time. I'm going to support again. Uh with the sum of fifty ajema. Please, ndeka. Onu, ozi, unke, unkezi onu, dodoni, nae poha. Because eh, inhele nao, oele, oele, owoye, ele, sosowoye yake ne, inhele. Dodoni, inale me, nae wino wine. Eh eh, so nge fifty ajema, total of hundred ajema, I give a support to this town hall meeting. I, well, so na choni, na I want to more of this in future, thank you very much, I eat my mic.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, IKA. Eka State is encouraged, thank you, IKA.
We are very grateful to you too. God bless you my brother.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, I can't find where to raise up my hand, Sonny.
Okay, so uh grab your opportunity now, Chief Flash.
Okay, um I just want to say, I support this gathering with thirty ajema. I have sent it to Tina in Ireland.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hmm.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, we come back to Yunis. Yes sir.
Are you familiar with Tina sir?
Yeah Tina is the Ireland, Ireland rep.
Thank you sir.
Yeah, thank you. We come to Yunis Uchachi. Yunis Uchachi, over to you.
Thank you very much, my Minister of Information. Thank you, thank you everyone, good afternoon from my end. I want to appreciate you all, IKA people, for this um event. Um it's not easy, but we have to push, keep pushing on. Yeah, thank you uh Ebu acting Prime Minister, my greetings to you. I'm proud of you, we are proud of you. Thank you for your unwavering um support for our Prime Minister, standing in the gap for him. And also to our, our able and distinguished um honorable cabinet members. Oh Lord, you are amiable and ever resolute, thank you all for standing for our Prime Minister in this, you know, moment of. Um Bruhaha, this well, yeah, I don't want to take much of our time. So I just want to appreciate our IKA people. Most especially those that host our spaces. They have made their presence and their voices loud on space. I am really proud of you all, in fact, I, I don't know how you do it, university, ife, um. Professor Enoha and all of you. You all are awesome, thank you all for standing so strong. And also to our media, uh my God, Pastor Van Van Van, God bless you. God bless you. Even when you, when you're snee, eh sick, you're blowing your nose, you're coughing, you're still there. Holding program morning, afternoon and night. Akarawa, you all make us proud. Honorable Betty, our mama, God bless you ma. Vision five five five, and every one of you, I don't want to miss any name, but I, if in case I miss your name, I appreciate you all. We appreciate you all. I just want to support uh the breaking of color and welcoming our APM with some of fifty dollars. And I also want to appreciate our IKA brothers with the sum of twenty dollars, oh sorry, twenty ajema, sorry. Making it seventy ajema, God bless you.
Thank you, thank you so.
Thank you, thank you, honorable.
Thank you Yunis.
Yunis, thank you, thank you. Now we come to Samuel Stanley. Samuel Stanley, over to you, I, I can see unity of purpose of the media team here. I see that the media team are here to make sure uh honorable Bright does not look for them. This is working very well. Unity of purpose, that is, that is awesome, that is awesome. Honorable Stanley, over to you.
Hello. Good evening everyone.
There were Marzi.
Um, me, me, me so, Abor. So, ndebenelebele, une mayikama ka ono je, biadis metino sobe ya, no ye nono. Me, inhe ono na chone yake ru noaka. Amaka meje, kuwahura no water, inhe this metino no important, and I'm very, very happy because. My way so many days eh, struggled since two thousand and thirteen. So I don't do, 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 uh one day. Our Udaya people.
Hey, I was. Think he lost his connection.
Yeah. When he was seen very stressed.
Alright, we continue, we continue while he returns. Please, the floor is still open for picking of color note, pick of color note. Support the color note, break the color note. Take color note home, answer your family name, answer your own name. Take color note, take color note, take color note, take color note. Okay, um, Itayana State. Will be taking the color note with fifteen ajema, fifteen ajema. Fifteen ajema on behalf of Itayana State to support Eka State. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We need more hands, more hands, support. Support Itayana. Come and take color, so that when you get home. Where you went, you can present the color that you picked on behalf of your family lineage. This is the color I took on behalf of our family. From the ceremony, we went in Eka State. So here is a color for our own family, pick your color, pick your color, pick your color. Moses Osusiyoma, over to you, your.
Good evening, uh our able APM. Information Minister, I greet you. Uh and all the cabinet members, I greet you all. Good evening, Bia France. IKA people, I salute. Um this night. Uh we have few uh of our people supporting Eka State. Um from Odumegu State. Marzi Ikeshuku is supporting uh with five thousand AJ. Mother Angreka is supporting with two thousand AJ. And the Masimosis is supporting with five thousand AJ. Making it two thousand AJ altogether, there were.
Thank you, thank you, thank you Odumegu, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Honorable sir.
Yes sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, uh, uh, we're thinking that uh we can proceed. Because this is breaking of color note. And um we can hear from APM, when we introduce him, when he's finished, then we can just go fully into the uh. What we have for the day.
Oh, APM is not ready yet, he's not on set now, so that's why we need to continue.
Um because our people has a lot of uh color note from different counties, of course.
Yeah, you can continue with the program. Continue with the program, pick the, the few hands you have, then you proceed. Let's take these three hands and let's be snappy.
Finish with the hand, then we, I will, I will control from our side.
Okay, Oman Bala, Oman Bala SA, over to you, your hand is up. Oman Bala SA, over to you sir.
Uh good evening from here, can you hear me?
Yes sir, we can hear you.
Okay, I want to appreciate all of you for doing a nice work. To making sure that this town hall meeting. Uh is heard. On behalf, don't waste too much time, on behalf of Oman Bala State. I am picking the color with the sum of ten ajema. On behalf of Oman Bala State, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We come to Ellen Peters, Ellen Peters, over to you, picking of color note, picking of color note. Ellen Peters, over to you.
Hello, am I being heard?
Yes, we can hear.
Yes.
Hear the remaining part of your voice, where you leave the other part of the voice.
I don't know, my voice is gone. Good evening my minister, God bless you. Eh, God bless every one of you, our APM, I salute every one of us. God bless our uh IKA people, I appreciate all your good work. And I am here to pick the. Oh no, please, I'm here to pick the color. Representing my Uroboy Soko State, oh God, with the sum of twenty AJ, AJ ma please. Thank you, let me quickly pick up my car back.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Samuel Stanley, finish up your submission before your network flock you again.
So that, wait I'll do you that. Now somebody call me, oh, the munchies and wizards people, when on me behalf, father, they tell me they call me, father. You know, better for that. So, as I was saying, I greet everyone, chukogikaga, why okay, protect eh, and then chabu we go on the social media, eh, neka. Can be our soldier, everyone, God will bless all of them, protect them. The Afra land will swallow all the useless people coming to our land to come and kill themselves. The Afra land will swallow them. So what am I saying that, unemayike, ndeka, they take them home and they break like, eh, break light in deka before. I don't know what is going on. Some people, they look, they go, they deny, and then Biafra, and then Biafra. My parents told me that we are Biafra. So, a lot of our people, they are all over the world, they have money, they are seeing what is happening in our place. I try to learn where better support to this Biafra, I don't think they are also bad, eh, full of the bad, eh, much, eh, any. So this thing we are creating, I am very, very happy. Since they only contribute to, since two thousand and thirteen, I believe in this my Ica State, now I go they put them, eh, when I'm one era, two era, I'll try to reach to my people. About Monday, now, they not control the Biafra, eh, Ica State, so that make a deal close to them. Because we have to start talking to our people, using our money, whether what they protect our, our parents, they buy marker, bajaji, they buy different, different type of thing. While our people, full and want to cover a Ica land. Not everything they can yokeje ku here. Through my wife, I will get contact of people when they control a Ica State, so that I will tell them a lot of, let us preach this Biafra to our people because Ica people, this thing not they enter their ear. Before a Ica land, I will say people will come and finish us one day. Not everything, eh, yokeje ku here, because I have a lot of idea in that Ica. Do do, nde kabon ono are ne, dyan ne, eh, save unani, eh, we cannot wait for our Kengo or politician to come and save us, oh, onyangua one era, two era, may come do it in, may come contribute. According to our Mazen and the Kano, one dollar is something. Two era is something. This thing is penny missing, so this why, so where Ica people do. Some people will tell about Biafra, they will say, go, you day you do, they talk about Biafra because they are not walking, drawing traz or panda, if you are walking, you know the insult we are receiving from white people hand. So I will close here, my people, thank you very much, everyone that is here, God will bless everyone. I break cola, the little one I have with eh, twenty Aj ma for the cola. Thank you very much, everyone. I'll try to reach our leader.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, eh, one, one, one di ken? Eh, Isaka join new group on deka?
Um, Ben join, yeah, and then the mare na, why, yeah, yeah, we may be joining, I can maybe come here tomorrow, nde bene na for.
Make I, make I join, or make I can pa, or make I can pa, yeah, I'll turn.
Ben join, eh, they were meeting, ben join eh. I will join, don't worry, I will join. Yeah. Alim, oh Lord, oh Lord.
Thank you, thank you, let's go, let's go, let's go, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Victor Nanso.
Ch, 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 seni kakwenu.
Yeah.
Roy. Ch, 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 seni kakwenu. Eh, eh, nikaku zono.
Yeah.
Oh yeah. Uh, I'm like, eh, I'm like, eh, I'm like, eh. I'm like, eh, ka, ka, wono ne, me wa, wo ika, oh farm. Eh, listen eh, le, ne, ne, hili. Ica land must be defended. He said.
Do do, you are completely.
Ali, ali, ne, ma.
Now so, now so.
Eba ho, ozo, ozo wom.
Neno, yes.
Kuni, do do ni. Because eh, yamari, yamari, eh, eh, yamari, eh, oro, eh, oro godo, yakke, eh, she, eh, she in the flani. Eh, oro, eh, oro godo, eh, okay, Richard, eh, she in the flani. Okay, Richard, eh, she, eh, she in the jajawit, okay, Richard, eh, she in the Nigerian terrorist. Nda, welle, welle, wala, welle, me, me, hili, welle, me, me, ni we, biya, Ica, eh, money. Mbah, nto ro. Let them back to land, yako wo. Onwe ba, wala, abo, idumo gala. Mbo no we, marine, ni we, jeme da, choma, idumo gala, era, era, era la po we. Yamari tan ne, nchari very, very happy. Ica, bilie nu. Stand up. The defense of our land. Oriyeye ka. Ihele ma, zunam de kano ku, omegwa, kaili che. In fact, because of time, nen lando op with one hundred and twenty Aj ma. Okay, buche zukwa twenty Aj ma to top it up, in law wa, we ni, eh, oro godo. Mbo ni, ne mo, wo ika, eh, oro godo, ke, eh, she we. Oh morning, eh, we, kasaka ne.
Yes sir.
Eba ho yako, yakke, yakken ku ro. Dalono.
Kaleno, ma.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, honorable Bright, back to your program please.
Okay. So, thank you sir, um. Thank you very much, Minister for information, I is deputy for the privilege to do this today. And we are receiving details from Awok County. Well, I think this is the support for this town hall meeting. The Awok County head is giving, when I mean Awok, I mean Ababo for those, for those who are sorry. Is giving eighty, eighty K, eighty thousand Aj ma, Aj, sorry. And Mr Okoro is giving five K Aj. Eh, this person said he's anonymous, he's giving another five K Aj. Eh. Oyeka, Sivanus is giving two K Aj. Another anonymous. Secretary, I hope you are writing, please write everything. Another anonymous is giving five K. And Mr Okoro Yeka is giving five K Aj. Okay, I still have Azagba County. Etnut Secretary. Azagba County, the deputy of the county head, assistant county head is giving eighty K Aj. Mr Ifan is giving two K Aj. Mr Chiki is giving three K Aj. Anonymous one K. Another anonymous one K. Uh, Mr Chooks, three K Aj. Thank you very much, Azagba and Awok County for your participation in this town hall meeting. Which is eighty K Aj. It's not eighty K Aj, it's eight K, eight thousand Aj. Please, it's not eighty thousand, it's, the deputy of Azagba County gives eh, eighty thousand, sorry, eight thousand Aj, I don't know why my.
Eight thousand. Eight thousand.
Eight thousand, please.
Eight thousand Aj, yes.
Okay. So, Aniofu. Aniofu, eh, county head is giving three thousand Aj. Mr Chinidum is giving two thousand Aj. Mr Izu is giving two K Aj. And Ezichima County.
Probably that, maybe they were.
Ezichima County is giving three K Aj. And anonymous two K, another anonymous two K. Eh, Mr Jude is giving one K Aj. And another anonymous one K Aj. I hope that people understand, guys doesn't want to show their names, stuff like this. And Isimiri County. The county head of Isimiri is giving the government three K Aj. And the venus, one thousand five hundred Aj. Anonymous, one thousand five hundred K. Another anonymous giving two K Aj. Igbo do. Igbo do, eh, koma county. Honorable Parawa, in case you want to comment for anything, please, you can comment.
Continue, continue sir, continue.
So Igbo do county is giving, the county head is giving ten K. Chiko Dili, five K. Emeka, five K. Isiyoma Chuku, three K. Namde, two K. Chinidum, five K. Ikeshuku, six K. Shidera, two K. Then Igba K. Igma K County, or Igwa Kerek County. The county head is giving three thousand Aj. Mr Arim is giving two K Aj ma, Aj, sorry.
Mr Arim.
Agarim, Agarim is giving two K. And, and Paul is giving another two K. Eh, Mensa is giving one K. Then Ica Metropolis. The county head is giving six K. Um, this people in the Ica Metropolis, eh, it's a very sensitive place for Ica people, the guys used to go with anonymous. Anonymous gave four K. Anonymous gave two K. Another anonymous gave another two K. The fourth anonymous gave two K, and the fifth anonymous gave one K. So Awok County. The county head is giving the government five K Aj. Who's it? If you lower him, please. Thank you. So, sorry. So, uh, Awok County, uh, the chief county, the county head, sorry, is giving five K and anonymous gave three K. Another anonymous gave two K. Another anonymous give another two K. Ica people, like say, with the fear of war. Everybody, all the entire cabinet come be anonymous, I don't understand. So, um.
We are just teaching that way.
Okay, uh, Okwoto Lopu. The administrator of the state, thirteen K. Um, anonymous five K. Chimaku, Chimanku, Chimma, eh, Samanku. Five K please, sorry, Samanku, pardon, pronounce your name well, forgive me. Eh, Oko, Oko ye, Okonye, Okoye, sorry, Okoye. Okanye, Okanye, three K. And Samanku five K, remember, eh, secretary, Mathew.
Okoye.
Okoye, Okoye, Okanye, something like that. Sorry, uh, Mathew, two K. And Akodi. Ako, Odie, two K. And Obueji.
Right, that name before, that name before was Chinaku, Chinaku.
Oh, that, that, that one, he gave us five K, Chinaku, Okiki, Chinaku. Honorable, okay, Honorable Chinaku, yes. Thank you, so Obueji, Obueji, Akumazi County. Uh, the county head is giving six K. And Sankechi, three K. Evangelist Eminiki, twelve K. Anonymous, one K. Ujuma, Abiguma. Ujunwa, sorry, huh, Ujunwa, one K. Anonymous, one K also. Eh. Omunede, ndirikanti. Omunede, ndirikanti, the county head give four K. Rada ikene, two K. Anonymous, two K. Ifeshuku de, one K.
Ifan echuku, Ifan echuku.
Ifan echuku, yes, Ifan echuku, one K. And Chi Kamso. One K. So. This is Ica State government cabinet and citizens of Ica supporting their countries with a little token as regard to this August town hall meeting. And as we can see, the acting prime minister of the Biafa Republic Government in exile seated with us already. And thank you for, thank you for your participation, all the countries in Ica, especially the county head you actually represented were as leaders of your countries. Although we're expecting more from on-ground works as regards to the, all we're doing. And thank you, honorable Minister for information, Akbarawa, for this very privilege and making this gathering, if you allow us, we would like to move to the next agenda. Minister Parawa.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you sir. So we have the next item which is the two songs to welcome our acting prime minister. So why we stand by and taking this eh, taking the welcome song.
It's not coming on, it is playing from your end, it's not playing out here.
Yes, yes.
Is he not playing?
No, no, no.
Ouch, ouch, okay, okay, let's give it to our, let's, let's, let's send it to you sir immediately, so.
Okay, forward it, forward it.
I'm doing it. I thought he was playing shit. I thought you was playing shit. Seventy-six. Forward it, sir.
Okay, let's pick it up, yeah.
Ife, can you please forward the other one, I don't have it. Forward the other one to. Omunede doesn't afford it to Aparawa, let's use it to welcome our APM, please. That is more horrible, more. Ife, do you acknowledge it? Okay, got it. So Minister for information, I'm sending you a particular.
So which one should go first?
The one, I, the one if you just sent.
The one if you just sent, let me check.
All right, the one I just sent.
The one that the women start the beginning, is it, is that the one that should start?
Yeah, where the women are seated.
Uh-huh, that should be the first one.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Omunede doesn't, okay.
This one on the screen, this should be the first one.
No, sir.
No, not this, the one I.
The one if this.
All right. Please be sure that the sound is coming out as I play. Let me see.
It's still coming out yet.
Check, if the sound is coming.
No. Not yet.
That one has some, um, issues, that one is in agree come out too. Let me play the other one. Thank you, the good people of Ika. And at this point, uh, we will. Follow our APM. So.
All right, all right.
APM, welcome to Ika State.
Wow. Hello fellow Biafrans. Onne meere. Ihe na diye koumeme. Onne meere. Ihe na diye koumeme. This time around. The zoo terrorists Nigeria have jammed double Tiba. We have been good guy. We have done everything possible. So we can work together. So we can go our separate way. I'm a bad guy. Bad guy, as long as they don't let Biafra go. You know, K Warhawk. Greetings fellow Biafrans. Greetings to our both leader, Mazin Namdekan, and our prime minister, Mazin Simonheba. We remember our heroes. That have set this space for us. That have laid this foundation for us to follow. We salute them. And we remember our vic, the victims of this bloodsucking zoo terrorist country called Nigeria. It's not that, it's not their fault that they are victim. But is the situation we find ourselves and we correct it. Greetings to all the members of the cabinet. From Brigade and the de facto government. To the admin, the reps. And especially our media team. Led by Honorable Mazzi Sunny Aparawa. Greetings to you and your team. And my fellow Biafrans in Ika. Thank you for this opportunity. For inviting the Brigade Cabinet and Biafrans at large to come and wine and dine with the citizens of Ika. Thank you all, the admin and the executive. And fellow Biafrans that have been sitting at home, you are not forgetting. We know you are doing the nethful. For us to be free. Your sacrifice will not go in vain. Any genuine sacrifice will not go in vain. And we know the reason why. The sit at home is still being done or conducted. Until we fully liberate our land and get our freedom. And the victims. We remember you. We mourn you. Don't worry. We will revenge. We will fight and fight and fight. Until. There will be no more terrorists in our land. And before I move on. I just want to tell my fellow Biafrans. I'm filled with joy getting some positive news from Finland. Our enemies even in Finland are running scattered. They are disappearing. The game is changing. A war is changing. And I also have some good news. From our leader, which the Nigerian zoo country kidnapped. Those are things on the other side that they are fighting for Biafran. The illegitimate Paralympic government. Our both leaders don't know anything about it. They are not part of that fake government that have aligned themselves with the enemy. Iga Duakanon. Fellow Biafrans. This week have been a week. With a topic that is so controversial. A topic that some don't want to hear. A topic that some say, Mazyo Getchukunkire, why are you going there? So I feel uncomfortable. But I will tell you the way it is, either you like me or not. A lot of people have criticized the president of Ukraine, Zaleski. When he went to see my dear President J. Donald Trump, Akshomun. Why he's not dressed with suit and order? Why is he not smiling? Why is he not walking like a gentleman? If you're in his position, just like we, what will you smile about? His country is by, is being overrun by Russia. And thousands, hundreds of thousands of Ukrainians have been killed. Likewise, Russia as well. And Zaleski is not happy about seeing his people being killed daily. He have nothing to smile about. He have nothing to dress like a gentleman. We have a popular musician who was killed by the zoo terrorist country of Nigeria. Carl Fela Kuti and Nicola Fela Kuti. He said he's not a gentleman again. We are no more gentleman. It's time to fight and Duakanon Woto Woto. If the other in your community is the one bringing the terrorists. If you can, bring him down. If it's the shift in your community that are bringing the enemy to kill you. To buy you. If you can get to him, get to him first. They have killed us enough. If it is the leaders of the congregation. We know in the time of our Lord Jesus Christ. We know there is Saras, Sarusia and the Pharisees. Who are they? These Pharisees are the leaders of the church as of that time that are not doing the right. And our Lord Jesus Christ confronted them. In the temple, what did he do? When they was doing their buying and selling. He threw everything away. He condemned them. We Biafrans are condemning all the fake pastors, reverend, bishop. Any Biafra leader of any congregation that is not pushing Biafra. That is bringing the terrorists to kill you. If you can, before he get to you, get to him first. If you can do it, support the men that are defending the land. Enough is enough. What happened with my dear President J. Trump? He did not visit the Houthis with smile. He hit them hard. He hit them real hard. And the preparation to go to Iran. Very soon. They will be hit harder too. If you want to fight your enemy, you have to prepare. Fight if you want to fight. If you don't want to fight, step aside or you let your enemy overrun and kill you. But in our case, it never happened 1800 ago, it never happened 1600 ago. It never happened 1200 years ago. And it will not happen now. The British government, they try to conquer our land from the 1600 to the 1800. They could make wonders. They say it will not happen. And they succeed by magneting the goddamn useless country called Nigeria. Bringing the North with us. Bringing the North in the sense that our forefather thought being so kind and nice, they did not know that the British have smacked them on that very one. That is how they penetrate our land. If not, Biafrans are not retreat, no surrender. That's why what happened in Georgia, Atlanta. We have group of Biafrans, our heroes. They said they will rather die instead to be a slave. Or instead to be slaved. What is happening now is a lot of us, Biafraland have been infiltrated with all these useless so-called fake men of God, bishop, reverend and all that. Very fake. With fake miracles. They have used our religion to destroy our land. I'm a good Christian bona fide one for that matter. The Lord is my Savior. I believe in Him. Whatever I'm doing is from what I was taught from the Holy Book, the Bible. To worship God with all my heart. To serve the interests of humanity. To love God. If you love Chuku Okike Abiama, you will do the needful. You will represent God in Biafraland. You will fight the injustice. You will fight to protect the creation of Chuku Okike Abiama Jehovah God. You will fight not to let those that call you infidel kill you, rape your children, behave you, even turn you to meat. This morning, there's a video trading in social media. Saying the Fulani eating our Biafrans. Why are we going to allow this to keep happening? Four days ago, I addressed the congregation. I'm sorry, I addressed the church. I believe in the church. And I believe in the members of the congregation. And not the power of the church through the members of the congregation. Without the members, if we allow all these members to be killed, to be born alive, who we make up the church? The sod that clergyman that will never make it to God Kingdom. They are dining with the terrorist country. They have sold the members to the highest bidder. And some of the members have not realized it. Why are the clergyman not preaching about the salvation of Biafra? Why are they not preaching about the freedom of Biafra? They want to preach about the Kingdom of Heaven to you. Why don't they preach about the kingdom, the one we are seeing now? You have to be alive first to worship God and to see that Kingdom of Heaven. Do they want you to be killed before you can now enjoy the Kingdom? If you are in any of this church as a member of the congregation, your clergyman, they are not speaking the language of Biafra restoration. If they are not speaking the language, how we fight back? How we resist these terrorist Islamic Jihadis bloodsucking? Leave that gathering, it's not for you. Here in the Western world, the clergyman, the men of God, they speak for the people. They speak for the interest of the congregation. They speak for the members. They help the communities. They build the communities. Why is Biafraland different? Because the British Empire, the British failed nation, they brainwash and turn everything upside down the way we worship. For you not to realize, they want you to worship man instead of God. And the fake clergyman have used that opportunity and cage the members. Brainwash the members. Lock the members. Twist the members. How they want to twist the members. And who is the victim in Biafraland today? Not the clergyman, not the bishops, not the reverends, not the pastors. The Biafrans, the members of the congregation are the victims. The clergyman are dining and whining with the politicians. They are on payroll. September last year, I happened to have a meeting with one of the congressmen in Washington DC. He relate to me how the Nigerian terrorist state do send some bishop to Washington. And when they come to Washington, they don't speak for the interest of the people. They speak for the interest of the Nigerian state. They are on the Nigerian state payroll. How long will they forward now you? They only come to see vision. Bad visions, not good one. How will be killed, how this will happen? What about the sweet dreams? What about the good vision? How Biafra we actualize? How Biafra will be like Dubai? How Biafra will be like China? How Biafra will be like Japan? How Biafra will be like Singapore? How Biafra will be like America? How Biafra will be great again? All these fake useless stupid pastors, bishop, reverend, they don't tell you that. Only what you will hear from them is heaven. Sow your seed every Sunday and they will promise you heaven. Tell them to get a hell out of here. Why is it only when you sow your seed, the Kingdom of Heaven will be yours? What about the Kingdom of Restoring Biafra? Ndebebe, hey Ryan, they have scammed us. If Washington DC will be fighting for Biafrans. If Washington DC will fight for the Christians to put Nigeria back to country of particular concern or country that persecute Christians. What about the clergyman in our land? What are they doing? They are not protecting us. They are not speaking. Look at what happening in Okiwu. Members of the congregation have been born alive. Their house have been destroyed. But the clergyman in our land don't speak. Look at what is happening in Ica. Look at what is happening in Yamufu. They don't speak. This controversy that I have started for the past week, we continue until we open our eyes. Until we know that we be scammed. Here in Western world, I practice Christianity. But the way we worship here is different. What? Who did this to us? It's a way of division. Now that we have found out the truth, I as members of the congregation, I encourage my dear members. Put your money. Where your money will work for you. Put your money. Where your money will save your lives from the hand of these monster terrorist Islamic Jihadis bloodsucking demons. Put your money. Where your money will save you from these monsters. Where your money will save you from Boko Haram. Put your money. Where your money will save you from ISIS. Put your money and support your BDF. Support your Liberation Army. Support those that are defending your land. Stop giving your money to all these fake so-called men of God. In the time of our Lord Jesus Christ, He condemned them. He condemned the fake one. He condemned the Pharisees. In our time today, we are condemning them. We will say the way it is, anyone that said it is a fight against religion. Tell that person to get a hell out of here. I am a Christian. I am a bona fide one for that matter. I believe in my Lord Jesus Christ. I do. And the number one freedom fighter of all time is Jesus Christ, if you don't know. And the number one terrorist of all time is Muhammad. That is a fact. He taught his people how to kill to convert to Islam. Muhammad taught his people that if you not a Muslim, you are infidel. Our Lord Jesus Christ never teach us to kill people because they are not Christian. Rather, he said law because God is law. John Theresistim, Geman Abunyoka. John Theresistim, what does he? Wake up, members of the congregation. Your land is about to be overrun. And why I'm after the so-called useless clergyman? I just realized and found out the problem. Because they control over 80% of Biafrans. They twist their mind how they want. And the Biafrans so much believe in them. The Biafrans worship these men of Babylon like their God or their creator. Out of 100%, we only have less than 5% of real men of God. I spoke with some of them this week. I spoke with some of the influential men of God in our land this week. That's what worries my heart. They relate to me what they are going through. That if even the so-called men of God that have sold out, that are working with the Nigerian terrorist state, fighting there. Because of their stand. Chineke only local that are fake pastors and reverend. All of you will be thrown when time come. All of you fake men of God that have deceived our people instead of fighting for their right, you keep teaching them about the Kingdom of Heaven. They have not finished inheriting the Kingdom of Earth. You taught them about the Heaven One. Why you made them get poorer? And the clergyman are wasting, buying houses, building mansions, having all kind of private jets. They keep enriching themselves. And they turn the members to their property. They turn the members to their POS. They turn the members as their bank. Where they can always go and withdraw money. Members of the congregation shine your eye, they have scammed you. Open your eye. How many of the clergyman have come out and condemn what is happening in Okiwu? How many of them has spoke out? How many of them have said something? If it had been here, United States of America, you would see the real men of God. Ndeziyoku Bundo, speaking, talking. And back to the congregation of the Judaism. Because we worship Judaism as we Judaism as well. What about the congregation of the Judaism? Are they speaking up in your congregation? Are they talking about Biafra? Are they talking about the Kingdom of Biafra? That is the Kingdom we know for now. No one have go to heaven, come back and tell us how it is. Let's enjoy the one we are saying for now. That is the fact. And what about the traditionalist? How far? Those that have their fault. Are you are fighting to save the land? Your children have been killed and massacred. What are you all doing? When I see the so-called Fulani terrorists, some of them look like bunga fish. Like people without strength. We allow them. It's all our fault. Because we allow them. If a madman approach you with a stick, if you run, that madman will laugh at you and call you crazy that you are mad. If you stand your ground with the same stick and hold your own stick high, that madman will call you mad. Say you scared me. What happen is that when these terrorists approaches, we run away, we disappear. If they come after you, go after them. If the problem is the cow that they parade around Biafraland, kill all the whole goddamn cow. We value life more than cow. We don't need their cow. They have killers because of their cow. In the name of chasing their cows from our farm. The same cows have destroyed our crops. The same heather men have raped our women, our children. After raping them, they behead them. What a shame that would keep quiet. What a shame that would keep quiet. Bounding of cow in Biafran land did not start today. Biafrans, what do you see eating cow? Some of these cows, these headless men do sleep with them. Some of these cows have diseases. We can't live in a country with people like that. We have our way of life. We have our system. For those that want to breed cows, they know how to do that. That's why we have ranches. Biafrans. My heart here is bleeding. I'm not happy. And I believe majority of Biafrans are not happy. Look at where our little mouse in Namdikan is since twenty twenty-one. What about Prime Minister? Since November of last year. It happened that our Prime Minister. After facing the date December second for our re-declaration. They call him for such question. After hard hard he have worked. To witness that day and see that day. He is not there. When the show was going on. On the twenty-nine in Finland. When these useless people trying to destroy everything we are work for, Ngozi and her group. Where I am, I don't see no joy in me. I was just looking across if I will see our Prime Minister walking to the stage. I was just praying thinking they will release him. To be part of the great gathering that he have worked for for over one year. I was just thinking that that miracle will happen. And some people are there. Not knowing that they have planned everything, they focus on my reaction. They focus on my reaction because I'm not clapping, standing up, laughing with them. Knowing that something is about to be messed up. Knowing that they are about to destroy everything we have worked for. The original date that was set is for December the second. All of a sudden. A useless human, woman being planted by the Nigerian terrorist. She told us she have intel. Intel from where? Liar! That the declaration have to happen on the twenty-nine. How will you re-declare Biafran without counting the vote? How will you re-declare Biafran without the vote of the delegates? They just want to mess everything up. Thank God that we have smart people in the brigade. We turn everything around and correct it on the second. Thank God we have somebody like. Our honorable Professor Chioma. We have somebody like. Our honorable. Siarositche Imam Madu. We have somebody like our honorable Ruby Nadi. We have somebody like our one and only. Marzi Chief. Honorable Sonia Barawa. And it happened on December second. I was boiling. There's too many energy in me. I say, let me go and talk to Biafrans. I shake the floor. Say, Biafrans. What the second of December stand for? They said, I asked them first, why are we here? What do we supposed to be doing on second of December? Not twenty-nine of December. They told me to re-declare Biafran. I say, wow. It's like we are in the same page. The energy start building up. I say, let me, let me wind, let me, let me, let me put the energy, let me set the pace of the joy of that day. Because that is the day. Akaraka. That is the day of damn. That is the day Marzi Simon, the Prime Minister. Annuated. And that venue. Where we re-declare Biafran and ratify it on the second is the venue. Of the man. Who composed this our beautiful hymn. We make sure that is done in that venue. A lot of people don't know the symbolic meaning of what happened on the second. Ndiochudina that's time, mad people everywhere. When our little mouse in Namdi come out. When our Prime Minister come out. A lot will happen. Those that are not supposed to be in the history of Biafran. Where we raise their name. With their useless demonic signatures. Everything will be corrected. The rightful thing, the rightful place will be given. To those we respect most. Our Prime Minister, our leader Marzi Namdikan. We will make sure we set everything right. Nothing have spoiled Biafran's. What you don't know is bigger than you. Everything will be corrected. And all the breakaway and fallout people from. What we are doing, if you think your name and history will be there. You have failed. We take every negative thing out of Biafran history. So that when our children grow up. That we read history of good people. We will not take the evil ones. With their identity, with anything they lay their evil hand. That will not follow us into Biafran land. Oh, that will not happen. We will get it right. Everything will be done right when the due time come. That is why my name applies, Ogechi. God's time is the best, whether you like it or not. God time is the best. Whether you like it or not. Ogechukuku kama. Ogechi, Ogechi kama. Ogechi, Ogechukuku kama. Whether the devil like it or not, Ogechukuku kama. God time is the best. Our leader Marzi Namdikan will come out. Our Prime Minister will come out. We will all dance. We will celebrate. We will save all the whole mess. Ndiochudina evil ones. They can parade themselves. They have this document, that document in them. You can go and. Go and dine and eat without your document. You don't know what you don't know is bigger than you. Biafrans, this week we will still continue in our topic of how to clean our land. And how to correct the mistake. Of those that have brainwashed us. Those have brainwashed over eighty percent that they can't think properly. The leaders of the congregation, they have done that. And they succeeded. That is why the members listen to them a lot. If you a member in the congregation start to ask yourself question. Why is your pastor not telling you about Biafran? Why is your pastor not preaching how Biafran will be beautiful? Why is your pastor not imitating, immulating United States of America? That is fighting for the Biafran's Christians that have been killed by the terrorist jihadis Islamic Nigerian state. If a foreign country, a foreign nation can be fighting for Biafran's Christians. What about your useless clergyman? I will be calling their name very soon. Kohanobwa, I'm not going back. I will be calling their name very soon. If we a member of that congregation, if you don't like what I'm saying, you leave that congregation. Go to that congregation where the leader will fight for the members. Where the leader will condemn what is happening in Okwe. Where the leader will condemn the killing of Biafran's. Where the leader will condemn the burning of Biafran's. Where the leader will speak. So that the whole world will hear. Because the leaders of the congregation, they are influential. They have voice. Look at what happened in Washington DC. When America is about to put Nigeria back in CPC. You saw a leader of a congregation from Benewi. Why do they invite that leader? Because they have voice. They respect them in any society. Leaders are always respected. And if you all remember that Biafran from the Tink Tak, her name is Oge Onunu something. The company or the organization she worked for, the Tink Tak Group is out of business. They no longer exist. Because that very day, she have the opportunity to fight. She have the opportunity to set the record straight, to let the United States of America know what is happening. She dodged all the question. They have gone out of business because our God is alive. Chukwaki Kabiyama is alive. Every enemy that we have, it will never go well with them. From the governors. The illegitimate governors that are not working for our interest to the traditional shifts. To the pastors, the reverends that are fighting against Tineke or Hani洛, it will never go well with them. Do I have a turn on? In your own way, if not, we need your ajima to keep this fire burning. We are winning. Ndewon.
Thank you, APM. Thank you. Thank you. With that fury. I think those that say they have not seen you angry before today. They can compare your face to your previous faces that have spoken before. So the message is very clear and the floor is open to all Biafrans. To express their views. Um, Victor Nonsu, over to you.
Thank you very much, though I'm in a public space. Ogechi, Ogechi kama. Ogechi, Ogechi kama. Ogechi, Ogechukuki ke kama. Ogechi, Ogechukuki ke kama. Uh, my APM, Marzi more respect, more grace to your Abo. We on behalf of Ica State and on behalf of Olo State. Uh, Indolusi Awuchila. Yes. So we say Awuchila, then they can say, uh, uh, Indol. So I want to say thank you very much and to support. Uh, this wonderful and powerful speech. So I'm not going to, uh, say goodbye, uh, today without making it a round figure of one hundred and fifty ajima. Let it be your record. Yes, thank you very much. May God bless the people of Ica State and may God bless Biafran Liberation Army. God bless the Biafran Defacto government in homeland and may God bless Biafran government in Ezra. God bless you, APM, and every cabinet of the members. May God bless each and every one of us. Thank you very much. I is my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We come to Freedom for All. Freedom for All, over to you.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good evening, Biafrans. Good evening, my defitable. APM. Good evening, my Ica brothers and sisters in the house. Good evening, Sony Abarawa. Good evening, Pastor Vam Vam Vam. Good evening, my bride Osaze. Uh, our professor, our, our, our university. Good evening, lovers of freedom. I really, really appreciate today. I'm so happy to be in the midst of the, you know, the living. Yeah. So, um. I don't know where to start. I'm so happy. In fact, I don't even just know why I'm happy, but I'm just happy, honestly. So, uh, Ica Queen. Ica Queen. My APM, Akadidenu, Akamdidenu, my APM, maximum respect. I really appreciate it. No be lie, no be lie. I, I, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a. Oh my God. Maximum respect, sir. I love you. Biafrans love you. The genuine Biafran really love you. And you know that. Karigusa. Um, without being wasting time, I don't just know, but I'm just gonna, uh, put, um, donate hundred ajima. For the awardee and for our APM of coming today. So, thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you all. Good night, us.
Thank you very much, Freedom for All.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, brother.
Yeah. Ifa, ifa, well done. Ifa, ifa, well done. I love you. Well done.
Thank you.
One love.
Yeah.
Ifa, go ahead. Over to you.
Yeah, um, thank you very much, APM and the all the cabinets. Members, lovers of freedom, Biafrans all over. I beg. Yeah, I'm not a watch another thing again. Everything where they watch now, let you go pay, let you go break that Jira eight pieces. So I greet everybody in the house and, uh, um, Ica State, um, our own professor Chioma. Uh, hundred ajima to. Ica Medias, to support Ica Medias today for this fundraiser. Um, Professor Chioma, ndekekele yo. Chukuya yedne, chukuya dumai, dumai jino noi.
Thank you very much, Professor Chioma.
Um, yes.
Thank you, Prof.
APM speech, APM, greetings from my side. Um, my Oife, Chukodi. And I be fair, where I hold up places, and I go, I back to end it. So you welcome me with fifty thousand AJ. Then this is a moment, I bow in the arena. Then allegedly another hundred thousand AJ. I support to say Ica State. So altogether is thousand AJ. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And most use this opportunity to say a special thank you, uh, to our honorable Ife and the honorable bride. Uh, I know you guys are really active on this space and you are keeping the fire burning. Please keep, uh, spreading the word, speak the gospel undoubtedly, the way it is. That bitter truth, say it. That bitter truth that is heavy. Speak it and that bitter truth is the salvation. Thank you.
Um, thank you very much, sir. APM, what you just said now, you know, let me speak English. I wanted to speak Igbo a little bit because. It's one of the Nndibo, name, Moikane. Eh, oh. Amamebo esia ke habia. But, uh, no one know mo. Ansoe, ansoe ka, my own part of a ka, if I speak here. Even some part of a ka will not understand me. That is why sometimes when I look at some of these things going on in our land, I feel very bad because. Everything I'm doing today, I get a directory from my grandparents. Knowing who I am, even my direct father told me that. Even if they point gun in my head, I should never ever in, in my life deny my Igbo identity.
I should never ever in my life deny my Igbo identity. So that is why when I, when I joined this movement, I started seeing so many things, but truly knowing who I am, knowing what I, what I was taught even before my grandparents died. So it's difficult for somebody to tell me otherwise. I'm going to beg the entire Biafran land. Forget about the language you speak, the dialect or any other thing. We are one, we are blood, we are family. And the only place we have is that Biafran land, no other place. Living in America, in Europe, in Asia, in Canada, in any other place in Africa. Without Biafran land, you are nobody. This is one thing I want our people to understand. This is the only land that we have. Don't let anybody to deceive you. If you allow these people to take over our land, we are gone forever. And the worst thing you will do is to hand slavery to your children. Do not allow it to happen. Never allow these killings going on in our land to continue. It is time for us to defend our land. It is time for us to come as a family, join hands together, defend our land and take back our land. It's our inheritance. Nobody can take it away from us. But don't allow whatever they are seeing today, the life you are seeing in America, in Europe, in Asia, in Africa, any other part of Africa. Because I can tell you as far as I'm.
Uh, please, sorry to cut you off because I'm not, if I tell you that I'm happy here, I'm not. We're in the history of my kind in recent years. Did you see what we are seeing in social media? This morning, there's this video trading. A Biafran that is terrorizing had this born alive, kill, burn, roast and be eaten. And they have the girls, the mind, video it and post it and brag about it. It's not happening in Afghanistan. It's not happening in Lebanon. It's not happening in Houthis, in Yemen. It's not happening in Syria. It's not even happening in Iran. The sponsors of this terrorist. And it's happening in your land. You bank it and you are keep quiet. And this is our people. This is our brothers, our sisters. If it is the governor that is bringing them, kill that governor. If it's the head of the church that have sold out, that mean that head of that church is a pharisee. Jesus Christ condemned the Pharisees. Kill that Pharisee. If it's the team of your community that bring these monsters to burn our children alive and eat our children, kill that person. If we don't do that, shame out to all of us. Ekeraweki, it's a division of labor. If you can't, you found it. You are fighting for your freedom. You are fighting for your existence. You are fighting for your survival. Enough. This will be my topic from now on. Is the war against the Pharisees that have betrayed us and brainwash the people of Biafrans? They have betrayed us. As Christians, I am a Christian. I believe in the Bible. I, I believe in Jesus Christ, but Jesus Christ taught me how to be good person in doing what is right. Not to practice evil. The men of God we have today, they are evil. Out of hundred percent, ninety-five percent are Pharisees. The Bible taught us about the Pharisees. Then we come, then we clothe themselves like sheep. Then we pretend they are worshiping God. Then we pretend they know God, but by their work, by their deed, their God is happening in Biafran. What have we done to deserve this? That a fool on it, we kill a Biafran. Rock a Biafran and eat a Biafran as a meat and we keep quiet. Shame to all of us, including me. If I don't do the next food to fight back. If I don't tell my people what we need to do. They are burning our businesses, burning our businesses, burning us inside the house. Eating our flesh again, destroying our flesh. Onyemwo, onyemrahiya. Ah, we don't want, we don't want. We don't deserve this. We never, Prime Minister of the Israelites, after Hamas invaded Israel. He said, they never asked for this war. Israel never asked for the war. We never asked for this war. They brought this war to our land, this happening in Biafran territory. We didn't go to Zomfara to fight them. We did not go to the mountains. We did not go to the Odudua Republic, the Ruabwa, fake repo- uh, Odudua people. They are either here or there, fake people. They're colluded, we did not. We never asked for this fight. We never asked for this war. From the one, they brought this war to us and we have to defend ourselves. It's few people on this Zoom here, but I believe thousands are worshiping. Cut this video, let it go viral, let it go fire and wine. If we don't act, if we don't do what we're supposed to do, they will kill us all and eat us as a meat. Oh boy.
And I believe, finish up your submission so that we go to the next person. Thank you, APM.
Okay, Minister of Information and thank you very much, APM. Um, the thing is that the Ika people is very, very difficult to wake Ika people up. But be, if one person succeeding coming up, it's very difficult to deceive them. That is, that is one of the things about the Ika land. So sometimes uh when I see some of the things going on in a Ika land, there are attacks and everything happening. I know Ika people are very difficult to talk to. They are very, very difficult to talk to, very, very difficult. You know, some of us living in a Ika land who are re-indigenous of Ika people. Disparate of Iku Miku, once in our, in our veins, but our people are very difficult to wake them up. So now I have to speak Ika, my Ika. Um. Every phone my car, I can make it. Ele bashiwo diibo. Ele akaycho. Aliyanya, we are one don.
And when we make mad we say. A point me change. A cool home. I'm not even me who make a customer. And it pains me so much that those who are very close to me, even my friends, who watch what is happening in a car land today. The killings going on in Biafra land, their attacks and they will keep quiet. Sometimes it's very difficult for me to come out and speak up because I know in a car land we have men who are very way, way, way strong in everything in a car land. But I don't know if they have choose to become a slave in our, in our land. A cap people, I am begging you all to wake up. Stand up, face your enemy. It is time for us the Biafrans to defend our land. That disunity is something that we never, ever, ever happen in a car land again. It is not going to happen again. Divide and rule will never happen in a car land again. We are going to correct all the mistakes. It is time for us to work as one people. Join our hand as one people. Fight as one people and defend a car land. Defend Biafra land, defend Igudumigundu land, defend Uroboisuku, defend Etayana, defend Apa and all the states, the whole forty states of Biafra. It is time for us to wake up. We are sleeping. We are sleeping. Biafrans are not weak people. Forget about the means blood we have in our land. But it is time for everybody to wake up. So many things is going on in our land. This is not who we are. Our forefathers defend this land. If not because of our forefathers, we would not be here speaking today. They would have turned us to Kechuku Mohammed. She ne do, um, uh, what is it called? Eh, Etayru. That is not who we are and we can never accept it. I am begging everybody to rise up. Stand as one people, speak as one people and defend the entire Biafa land as one people. I'm going to support this speech again with another fifty thousand AJ, making it two hundred fifty thousand. Greetings to everybody.
Thank you, uh, Minister Ife. Thank you. We come to Ngeroka, please.
Eh, starting from Bueno, it's raining. Let's go.
Kiroka, over to you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Okay, so I will, um, so I greet everybody, please. I greet my APM, I greet my information minister. I greet my deputy information minister, I greet Ife, I greet university, I greet, uh, who is else? Okay, Reg, everybody, I greet the BMO. Okay, so I'll take, um, I'll take forty ajema, yeah, to support APM's speech. I'll take another ten to support my brother Ife's speech. I support everything that he said and add to my own voice. We are not weak people, right from time immemorial. No way, no way, no way. Our men have always fought wars. Fought wars, defended our boundaries, defended our women, defended our children. It's not going to happen in our own generation. That in our own generation, our ancestral land was taken from us, from these dirty people. It's not going to happen, please. All of us must rise. Rise, rise, including men, including women this time around. We must retrieve our land back from full, full land is not going to do this thing to us this. Ogaheme. So I'll take another twenty to support my own speech. Altogether is, um, is it not seventy, seventy ajema for this night, please? I will calculate and forward to Ife. Ballon, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Ife, I think I support another twenty thousand AJ.
Oh, wow.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Regan Fury, over to you.
But it's, uh, oh, ha, can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you very much. Greetings to the house, to the great Biafrans here present. Um, greetings to my honorable acting prime minister, his excellency Ogechukwu Kere, greetings to my prime minister, his excellency Simon, uh, Prime Minister Simon Epa. Greetings to our leader, Marcy Onyendunadikano, and to all our previous leaders. Special greetings to all the leaders in different departments, especially the different, uh, the military department, the chief of defense staff, triple star general, greetings to all of you that are here present. Um, I want to say to our Isuku and Urobo people that Njada Deta, us brother, Njada Deta did not fall from heaven. Who be your brother? Your brother, nah, that man, that boy, when he papa they ta, uh, sorry, when he mama they tied two piece rapper. That is our natural boundary. Where do you find these people? You find them in the land of Igudumigundu, where they caught today, eh do. You find them in the land of Ika. You find them in the land of Ijo and Ishakiri. You find them in the land of Ibo. You find them in the land of Ikure, Ibibiu, Efik, Idoma, Igala. This is where you find your brothers and sisters. And the collective of this people that I've cornered is called Biafra. This is why we are gathered here today. So my brothers and my sister, let us rise up together and defend our land. Oh, no name la ro ne nuwe wo wo. Oh, no name la ro ne nuwe wo wo. Oh, no name la ro ne nuwe wo wo. Wo wufu ma we Biafra ro kaka. Iko rika we ne nuwe wo wo. Iku isoko we ne nuwe wo wo. Iku robo we ne nuwe wo wo. Wo wufu ma we Biafra ro kaka. Iko ribo we ne nuwe wo wo. Iku re we ne nuwe wo wo. Ibibio we ne nuwe wo wo. Wo wufu ma we Biafra wo kaka. Igala we ne nuwe wo wo. Ishakiri we ne nuwe wo wo. Igo da mi go da we ne nuwe wo wo. Wo wufu ma we Biafra ro kaka. I'm going to support the Biafa liberation fundraising of our brothers from Ika, our brothers and sisters from Ika, on behalf of Urobo Isuku. Over the week, a brother was so gracious to me and in this fundraiser, I'm going to support with five thousand AJ. Thank you very much. My name is Regan Fury. Thank you very much, my APM. I take one of your.
Oh, no, my bro.
Oh, you really, sir.
Many, many work women, uh, okay, woman.
Ah, well, what you're able.
Uh, what I mean, you're able.
Okay, then, then.
Uh, woman, okay?
Yes, I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Regan Fury, BMO, BMO.
Before BMO, uh, Minister of Information, one minute, please. Um, those who love me in this movement, I want to use, uh, I want to use fifty thousand AJ to challenge those who can, who can support Biafra liberation on me. I add another fifty thousand AJ to those who can give us fifty thousand AJ. Let's do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's on. The challenge is on.
Okay, eh.
Jim, BMO, over to you.
Uh, good evening, my honorable information minister. Chief Abara was sunny. Uh, I call you chief. You're so wonderful. As an elderly person, I'm twenty-four hours with you people fighting for the freedom of the Biafran people. I'm an elderly man, a Biafran, a Biafran veteran. I started with the, my son, my prime minister, chief Simon Epandjoko. I thank you especially my information minister for everything. You are great. Thank you. I joined this program this night with our people in Ika State of Biafa Land. Ika man mano. Ika man mano.
Yeah.
Ika State man mano.
Yeah.
It shall be well with you, Ika State of Biafa Land. You are doing great. I'm supporting, I'm supporting you people today for welcoming our acting prime minister, his excellency chief Ogechukwu Nkere, Anya AJ Jogo Biafra with the sum of fifty ajema.
Chuku goes ready.
And, and, and and at the same time, I want to give a blessing to my son. My able acting prime minister, Ogechukwu Nkere. Please, my information minister, can you put a our acting prime minister in the main screen, please? Son, my son, you are looking great. My honorable acting prime minister, Ogechukwu Nkere.
Thank you, Deo.
I love you so much. You are doing wonderful. This is the first time I'm looking you in the face to tell you that you are a great man. You are the son of the soil. Our prime minister Simon Eba will be very, very proud of you as one hundred percent of Biafrans. I'm very proud of you. Son, continue your good job. I'm supporting your speech this night with the sum of hundred ajema. At the same time.
Thank you, sir.
Please, let, let me pray for you as an elderly man, as a father. Can you raise your right hand up, please? Take the blessings of the most high God of the land of Biafra.
As odd has. I went with the one already, yeah, right?
Start from, start from this moment. I give you the staff of the Moses. The same staff that conquer Pharaoh. You will lead this liberation until our prime minister Simon Epandjoko is out. And he will see the hand war that you have done. The same job that God almighty Elohim of Biafa land have given to him. These blessings I'm giving you today, my son. I am the son of the servant of the most high God. Receive this blessing. Power upon power. Wisdom upon wisdom. Knowledge upon knowledge. Both physical and spiritually. Son, start from today. A, C, land and wind, everything that almighty God that have created will listen to you and obey your commands. And so shall it be in the mighty name of our Lord and personal savior, Jesus Christ, the holy son of God. Our leader, Marzina DiKala call him Yeshua, and that is his name. Yeshua is our Lord and personal savior. The great savior of Ibo and Biafa land and Jordan, Israel and the universe. Through his mighty powerful name, I place this power on you today. You crush all your enemies. All that have hated you without reason. All of them, they will bow unto you. No matter whatever the enemies used to confuse some of them to be lying against you. They will repent and they will confess and they will bow unto you. Not only unto you, but unto our Lord and personal savior, Yeshua. English call him Jesus Christ. But we call him the son of the Chukwoki Kabiyama. We call him at the same time, we grew up with that name, Jesus Christ. It's his name. And his name is also Yeshua. The son of the living God. I bless you, my son. Today, through his mighty powerful holy name, you crush all the enemies. You cross the zoo Nigerian. You will cross every sabatua. You will cross Ngazi or a Benz. Nkechi, bless Nezobika. Fatima. Whatever she call her name. You will crush her only with your truth that you have started from the day one. And you are recognized in heaven and earth. I swear as our law, our own able prime minister Simon Eba. Because you are doing this job on his behalf. Just like Joshua did to this job. That is what you are doing today and you are blessed. I place this power on you from the air, from the sea, from the land, from everywhere, left and right, front and back. The power now is with you. What you said stands until your master come out, which is our prime minister Simon Eba. Son, all this prayer, all this power, all these blessings, I put it in your forehead. Whoever does show you, see your face wherever, whatever you said, go. Whatever you said is accepted because you really want the freedom of your people. I bless you in the name of Jesus Christ of Biafra land, the holy land of God. And I say, amen.
He said. And then, uh.
He said.
You are blessed.
He said, I say straight to the. One place that I'm gonna take that bar into me, let the bar go to Chukwokabiya. I accept the rest.
That is it. It's a blessing. It's a blessing. It's a blessing and it's a gift from.
And I allow you to pray this prayer. I know that you worship our Lord Jesus Christ. You're not like one of those Pharisees. If you have been one of these Pharisees that have sold their soul, I will say, bah. I know that that Pharisee prayer, we're not gonna, we are, we won't pass the ceiling. So for you to be part of what we are doing, that means you know the truth. Just like Moses fought for it. We, we people, we are biblical people and we know what the real world and spirituality work. Do we all remember and still, and do we already the story of Moses? Moses fought for the Israelites. Moses is a freedom fighter. So all of us here, we are all freedom fighters. And as a freedom fighting, you represent Chukwokithe Abiyama God, if you don't know. Moses fought for the children of Israel. Joshua. Aaron, named them. And all these are fake Pharisees. They refuse to fight for us. That means they are fighting for the devil. Thank you, thank you. And I say amen to the prayer, Deo.
You are blessed.
Well, we go to the next person. Uh, Mercy, Mercy, over to you.
Ah, hello?
Yes, right on. You can hear.
Okay. Okay, thank you, my, uh, information minister. Good evening, Biafras. Thank, good evening, my APM. Uh, you was, uh, this is my first time of hearing you so here today. Whatever that makes you this anger. Nothing is seriously. And I thank, uh, good, good evening for the cabinet members that are here tonight. My cap people, I greet you all. Uh, well done. I don't have any much to say, but, um, for the fury my APM displayed this night, I'm supporting, uh, our Ika brothers with, um, twin, uh, with thirty ajema. Then I'm supporting my brother Ife and the university with twenty ajema, making it fifty ajema tonight, Deo.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
My, my dear sister, uh, minister, I don't know who will be happy seeing Biafras being born and eating like chicken. I don't know who will be happy seeing Biafras being born in their homes. Being chasers from their business places, born the source of their income. I don't know. And people in Okiwu, I don't know how happy they are seeing what is happening. And Biafras at large, you see what is happening in here, Mufu. Our mothers been protesting for how long now? Asking for help. Who we help them? Who do they rely on? The illegitimate governors have failed. The devil, they are tired of crying. They are tired. They need salvation. And the source of salvation, God will use us, you and me, all of us. God will use Janu Biafras everywhere. Rise up! This is why our leader Marzina DiKala said, he need man, he need Biafrans to wake up. We have to do what is right. It is heartbreaking seeing what is happening in our land. If you think UN, they are not washing there. If you think America are not washing there. But if you don't rise up to defend yourself first, they will not help you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, APM, and thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mar, uh, Marcy, I support you with another ten thousand AJ. I will continue to support you people because, you know, we are there every day, we are speaking now, trying to wake our people up. The day Ika people will wake up, I know Ika land, it's not something to joke with. The day Ika people wake up, you're going to shock everybody. Go, go, go back home, ask questions and they will tell you. The day Ika people wake up, Nigeria will never, ever remain the same. I swear to God. Ika is small, but not the way they see it. That is why sometimes I feel very bad seeing Ika people trying to have anything to do with all this political igwe. If some people really know me and know who I am, in maybe in my community, to kings in my place, they will know that. For me to speak bad about the kings, they will know that they are not our solution at all. I call them political igwe because I don't give them their real name because I know who they are. That's why I start calling these people political igwe. Those who know me very well, will know that. I know what I'm saying. They are the last thing that will ever happen to us, those iguis. Ika people rise up. I'm seeing it rise up. Biafra is the only solution in the Ika. Anyway. When I I would die as an Ika person in Biafa land. My children will live as an Ika people in Biafa land. Nothing in this life will change me from being an Ika person. Because I know much about Ika people. The spirit of Ekumeku will never leave Ika people in this life. Ika people rise up. There are so many things, so many dangers ahead of us. It is time for us to stop it. Rise up, Ika people. Rise up. Go ahead, eh, bright.
Deo Ife, thank you so very much. Uh, APM. You may kege Bia, aleka, I see Allah. And, uh, okui ku ebeneita on APM. Uh, eh, we le jumoi. And, uh, we ekberende mani chukuyi ayikeme in omen do. Le amamihie kegeke okwanane, ole andebia Fraki. So baby Bia aleka, we have four men eh. Uh, we came a ken de kampa. Yanga aguande kadi ma meeting eh, Abiani meeting. Oh, yeah, we see APM, eh, eh, we want to talk to APM, we want to talk to APM. How many chonidu APM ku? Do you have the access eh, kege mo ge du, eh, PM, eh, interaction with him? Othu tan ho meeting. Eh, ke guano, no, the privilege na ino tan, na in utilize ya, eh, du, our APM ku, ku tanane. So, ndi ka, manya, Bia lebe nitan, eh, kwa de me? Keke do di APM o bankara, makoele tan muwe, because, ogarikana. So, eh, we can me here mke ku because eh, Ife, we name me ku ele, okuoda. So, ndi ka, Ika people are beginning to rise up because our time has come. Eh, so, how many we le, here na eh, me, you are watching our record, we won you ka. So, ya kwa de me, Arab Biafra, because Arab Biafra, Abiala, ndi fullani, Abiala. So, how many Bia leka, how many, ndi we are the sakai jumbo, ndi we, jumbo kuwa, substance agriculture kuwa practice eh. Short. You look at the ke, no, no, when he found eh, eh, kaka, develop eh, eh, of radio to this level. So, eh, Bia Frabula eh, oh, he ke. So that future, eh, chonire part of it. So, makoku, our APM ku, negi, eh, twenty ajema, egi, akame APM. Because eh, obi biana obia aleka, or we came a ke useful, and we came a ke profitable. This speech, you cannot get it from anywhere. No pastor will preach this thing to you. AKPM Gilagwene, what we are doing here is the work of God, the work of salvation, the salvation of the Biafran people, the liberation of our land. Only are the gospel. Unyo la lady preach anything outside, eh, APM will preach it, eh, the person is not eh. Eh, akujie, isibunkujie oloka. So, that eh, eh, gahu, eh, eh, da, tu ye, imuka iba huh. Do do ni, na eh, we eh, gahu, na eh, ge, tu ye, ilae, ilibrite eh, aliye. So, APM akuku wa mi ku, no le gi, twenty ajema, giya, actual man. So, no gizi, thirty ajema, egi akame, or the executive of Ika state government. Akono no ra, no, orinizi. Ije, uba monore abarme. Ika people eh, wele, so just, really. We learn in the way like this. Eh, when they here, eh, they, they are devolting, eh. So many eh, bah huh, eh, chingbe, fullani Bia, fullani Bia. So many rebaun, rechingbe, fulani Biafra, fulani Biafran guane, obulaga. Then eh, oru beni le changuwa before, eh, he did otosef. So, ndeka, volunteer men. Joining in the day, volunteer men. So, anele, kawonyo zozoo, ndi nala, kawane gi deceive, or change, or be, or change your mind. So, the executive, Eka State, eh, game, thirty a gemma, gi pame onu. Admin. Secretary. Acting secretary, eh, your assistant. Deputy admin. Ndiwa, eh, yendere security consultant, eh, kafamika monu, makavonu, and we are no, no, no. Let the evangelism begin, continue. Let the campaign continue.
All right, we have many hands up, so try to, I'm done with.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, APM.
Um, evangelist precious, over to you.
Hello, am I coming?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Moyka. Chuku gozo onuleu, even award me. Ya tryka, the assistants, ono tryka, chiku yokre, yono, eh, hurike. Only okoda, tonene. Onu ra, onu aleka, oh, he ke. Onu kadawu akare, you are rid of bo debo. That thing gives me joy, because onna, when they home. Nonna, they try pass we that are in outside the country, people that are in outside the country, they are not interested. But I told them that one day, the owner of the country where they are, they will baggage them, go back to Zoological Republic, where they believe. It is then they will know that, ah, they will start gnashing their teeth, by then it will be too late. But, um, I use this, eh, opportunity to encourage we that are in Europe to continue. I know we are few, but God will give us the energy. God will strengthen us, because eh, without God, we cannot do it. We want to go back home, the embarrassment, the harassment, the degradation, we are receiving in another man's countries too much. It's nothing to write home about, but we that are working with them, we know what we are passing through. How can? Eh, God gave us everything, we are here suffering. When I remember it, eh, in Union George Roosevelt, then they run. Because. God make us to be a king. Enemy come, they want to turn us to be a slave, we, we, we will never, never accept it again. So, I am welcoming our honorable APM. Mazie Ogenkiri, my director. Welcome, sir. We love you, because we stay together in Finland.
Thank you.
Woman. It's precious, sir. Thank you, sir. God will give you the strength. God said, your enemy, their sword, which they use, they want to use to fight us, it will enter inside their heart, their bones shall be broken. They will fall down, they will never rise again. I don't normally come out, but I'm praying. God have given our Prime Minister victory. The enemy will be asleep, he will come out and will be jubilating. It is written, and they cannot change it. What God have written concerning Biafra, no man born of a woman can change it, and no woman born of a woman can change it, enough is enough. So let us forget about Nigerian pastor, because they don't study the Bible, we that study the Bible, we know that in, in the Bible, even David. David is a fighter, what are you telling me, which Gio is preaching, they are not preaching, let us forget about them, and face our, our, our freedom. So I am welcoming our honorable, honorable APM. Thank you very much for your patience. You and our medium warriors. The whole accusation, you people, but you people just keep quiet, God was keeping quiet. But now, God is giving the stone, God is shooting them. They, they have not seen anything, this is just the beginning. Because me, the bad, bad prayers in the Bible is what I'm throwing to them, they cannot know no peace. So thank you, sir, I am welcoming you with, eh, fifty thousand AJ. Why I'm supporting our Eka, eh, soldiers with fifty thousand AJ, that is hundred, I'll send it to our administrator. Administrator, thank you, sir.
Thank you, gracious.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, you come to Biafra baby. Biafra baby, over to you. Biafra baby, go ahead. She's not ready, okay, um, Victor Mansur. Okute Biafra TV. Okute Biafra TV, over to you.
Uh-huh. Hmm. Ndeka, good evening, oh, ala ala, no.
Day one.
Ndeka, chukuyano eni, Alwa. Alwa. Hmm, namelo, otone. Uh, APM, akandilelala mekele, wokoma, chuku charama, chuku goze.
Kute no, yeah, day one.
Day one, um, aldi mojera, leka lekwa wa, PM Mazin, Simon Eba, se la chuku yedegue, egapata du de join nine, leka lekwa wa lidabu Mazin mandekano. Leka le, nde cabinet leader, ndeleme, kanjemanya la dranyen bombo, yagaziron, konyekri, yazele. Um. Our breaking news master, Mazife. I, I know getting anyone where I use, I go use and support you, eh, eh, madawa lid, I'm supporting Eka with five thousand AJ. Um, yagaziren, kaiganidu, thank you very much, I don't know, uh, should I pay through my estate, or?
Yes.
Through my estate.
Yes, you can pay through your state, and then you forward the receipt to them, then they will balance up through their financial directory.
Okay, okay, no.
As you pay through your state, indicate to your stated, uh, financial directory that this is for Eka State download meeting.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, thank you, we continue. Good number, over to you.
Yes, thank you so much, uh, once again, thank you, um, Honorable Minister of Information, thank you, my APM. Um, the cabinet members, the Eka States, admin, and the officials, I greet you all, thank you for your good works. More grace to everyone. Yes, my APM, uh, is, is late here, is about almost, eh, this is four AM, I'm not sleepy. Uh, I didn't, I'm supposed to be sleeping, but I said, no, I must be here, because eh. My enemy can see, make a nap, boy, eh, hey, you see, um, we must call a spared, a spared. That is the only way we will be free, and also wake our people up. Those who are fighting for their life, don't have to be politically correct. Political correctness is a crime, when life is being, being wasted, like chicken. Thank you, APM, thank you so much for that, let this water to continue. That is the only way we can wake up, to see that the people that are calling Christian, they are not Christian, they are effective, planted to deceive them, to destroy Christianity. To push them into slavery, you know, I can't imagine it, I can't imagine the divide, how the evil, this part doing, thank you, my APM. Um, and again, I want to talk about, eh, eh, the planted, eh, political kings. Let me put this that in, because our people are not analyzing things, that is our problem, we sit back, eh, because it don't affect you that moment, it don't say what it will happen tomorrow. And bridge it in time, I said, when enemy plant evil seed, unplant it on time, don't wait until they have roots. Let alone Germany, then. This, eh, eh, as in disobey any king that is planted by, appointed by governor. Some of them are not even from that soil, I challenge you now to begin to investigate, you see that some of them may not be blooded some of the soil. And this thing, this, before, kings pay homage to, to, eh, I mean, president and governor pay homage to the king, the master has more. But this time around, is the other way around, and this thing will make it easier for them to appoint a mayor in every state. And the, actually, I will be so easy to, 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 to start in your villages, we must rise up. Thank you so much, I want to support this, our APM speech, eh, twenty a gemma, plus thirty a gemma before fifty a gemma, our by chukukia bemo, our way, send this tomorrow. Thirty for Eka State, and twenty for, eh, eh, APM speech, thank you so much, good night, or good morning.
Thank you. I could, eh, na, meba. Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
All right, iPhone, over to you, iPhone unmute yourself. iPhone unmute yourself.
Yeah, hmm, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Rita Alex. I tried to write my name, but it didn't allow me to put it there, so it was an iPhone. Um, welcome, my honorable APM. Uh, thank you for the hard work you are doing, and I praise your strength and energy. I welcome all, uh, ministers in the house. Um, Eka people, you are also welcome. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that, um, our messages don't get down to the grassroots in the homeland. That's a bit of a worry for me, because I do call my relatives sometimes, ask them what is going on. Whether they've had X, Y, Z, they say, no, they haven't. And the thing is that they often watch the Nigerian television and news, which is full of lies. So, I don't know how we're going to be able to reach the grass, grassroots. I know the ones we do on the space, not every one of them have got, eh, data to watch, to listen, so. Um, I'm going to make some donations to. Eka people, to help them, to help support them, and then I'm going to live up to the challenge that ife gave of fifty. Thousand AJ, I don't have AJ, but I'm going to support. Eka people with one hundred a gemma. And I'm going to pay it and send the receipts to my UK rep. So, I use my mic.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, we read, hey.
So, I'm done on the message, we're working on it, and, uh.
You, Rita.
We need more of this AJ to be able to accomplish, you know, we still, uh, we have work ongoing. So we encourage every Biafra to be able to, uh, for us to be able to get all this done, we need more and more AJ, we need more support. That will really help, and we go along with. So we, we have a lot of projects we're working on, and remember, at the same time, we are fighting war. Serious war for that matter, like in Okwe, this past, almost two weeks now, the terrorizing zoo, bloodsucking country. Nigeria have over fifty armored tank and helicopter all everywhere, so. It's not, uh, freedom is not easy, it's not free, uh, it's costly. So please, we need as much support we can have for our BDF, our Liberation Army, they the one doing the job, so, and. They are ready to, to go, they are good in what they are doing. Biafran just have to do what is right, because we can wash this, our enemy, to, uh. Overrun our land, can never happen, just like our brother said earlier on about, uh, uh, Ekumeku. You know, this is a strong warrior at the time, they never allowed the British invade Biafra land. Out of two, we solve, they stand their ground as well. So the question is that what changed? So we want to reactivate all these forces, all these, uh, warriors. It's time, I think the time have come, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, APM, and, uh, thank you very much, Rita, I'm very happy. Hey, I'm very, very happy, you know, um, let me make this clear to everybody here, you know. Rita, thank you very much. I call on other people who are here, I respect you, and I, I add more respect to you today, I swear to God who made me. I am an Eka person, a very, very proud Eka person, that nobody can change his mind. I know much about my land, I know much about the history of my place, I know who I am. Which I even have problem with some of my people who don't know they really are, I am an Igbo man, a very proud Igbo man from Eka land. Which some of the people from my place don't really know. But I'm going to make this, this thing clear. Ibo land. Nobody from anywhere can take over Ibo land, with what I know, it's not a bad, it's not a joke. I say, when the time comes, people will know who we really are. Forget the division, the divide and lo, that, uh, Nigeria with their fullani people. Put in our means to create an immunity, this unity, to take over our land. Biafra land will never, ever be conquered by anybody, it's not going to happen, I swear to God who made me.
Tell, tell them again, I hope, they wouldn't be handled, let to new bullshit, eh, those that have here, here. Hope was the man, or was this other useless man, uh. Saludo, mba, una nugo, it can never happen. Uh, please, don't say it louder, can never happen, they can never take over our land.
Yes, thank you very much, APM, eh, some of them, they don't know. Ibo land can never be conquered, it's in the history, go and ask question, they will tell you, I swear to God, nobody can conquer Ibo land. There are so many things that people don't know. Instead of it to happen, people from nowhere will rise up and defend the land. That is one thing that people don't know, but I'm going to make it, make this thing clear. I am a proud, eh, calm man, a proud, eh, calm man, that. Hmm. If you don't know these things, eh, hey, go and ask question, they will tell you. Yes. I have to make it clear to some of them, they don't, they don't really know, the, they don't know much about the Igbo, Igbo, about the Igbo people, that is one thing they don't know. You know, when I, when I was doing a Igbo unity, Igbo unity, people, they, they don't, they don't really know, sometimes when I. Talk to them and tell them some things, with what I have in my hand, with the history, the bag, my background and everything, Ibo land can never be conquered. Ibo land can never be conquered, my name is not, my name is, my name is just half, ife, that ife is half, my name is ife chukudi. Understand? What God has written, nobody can change it. Ibo land can never be conquered, it's not possible, forget about all this noise that you are hearing anyway, but we are the one that is going to do it. But if we are hundred ninety people refuse to defend Ibo land, ten people will defend Ibo land, and at the end of the year, we'll get back our land, this is the history of Ndebo. But some people do not know much about us. Biafra land will never, ever be conquered, with that, that person is coming from nowhere, I don't care to know who that person is, I am begging everybody. Eka land is one of the strengths. Of this movement, but the problem is that, eh, Eka land has missed with the miss blood, all this miss blood. Who come out to Eka land and they try to. Take over some kind of position and other sense, but this is not who Eka people is. We are the history and the lineage of Ekumeku. It's not possible, you can't take over our land. Even if you are only to defend our land. I am begging everybody for the entire Biafra land, the whole territory. It is time to defend our land. And there is something that I used to know Ndebo very well, we believe in challenging each other. Challenging each other, call each other, this is what, that is in our spirit, okay, it's in our spirit. Challenging each other, call each other, this is what, that is in our spirit, okay? It's in our spirit. Yes. I am adding another thirty thousand A J to make it four hundred thousand A J. I'm putting about four, make it four hundred thousand A J to wake Eka people up. Eka people stand up.
Thank you.
Eka people stand up, four hundred thousand A J. I am waking Eka people, stand up anywhere you are, we are not slaves. Our forefathers is slavery, which can never be slave. And I challenge more people who can, because we believe in challenging, this is the history of our people. You understand? Even if we are three, we are four, we are five, there are so many things we can do to let people know that this is our history. So, I am making it four hundred thousand A J. If you are any, from anywhere, please challenge me, we add more, we will do more things to make sure that eh Biafran land must be protected. We don't care to know who you are, where you are coming from. Full army will never take over Biafran land. It is better they kill us, but they can never, because they know that hey, we are even more stronger, more better, or more dangerous than them. But just that, we keep calm. The day Eka people will rise up, everybody will, everybody will regret about eh calling people to come out. I swear to God, Eka people are the most, one of the most dangerous people in the entire Igbo land. But they don't speak up. But the day they rise up, Okowa told eh, the governors in the entire eastern region that don't let Eka people to rise up when it comes to this issue of eh, S A S protest. I know how it happened. I am begging Eka people. Rise up, it is time for Eka people to do the right thing. It is time for Biafrans to do the right thing. It is time for us to rise up and do the right thing. I challenge more people to put that fifty thousand. I am making everything that four hundred thousand. If you challenge, let us do it. We have to raise the fund in our state for our people to come out and know what we are doing. If I move, Ife Tukudi, when I can I'm proud Igbo man in old the start, the test it. I greet everybody in the house. Ekelemo.
Yes, thank you Maazife. Let's go to the other hands that are up, um, Biafran in New York.
They were no, omobiafrasi.
They were, they were.
A P M make a lekwa ama. Ah, brava sani.
Lovey, lovey, they were, hey, come to Eka, they were.
Yes, so we travel all the way to Eka land.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, uh, Rita said something about um radio or television. Before the white man came with television and radio. You go outside, you do something, that message get to your parents before you get home. Uh, how, was there any telephone? No. We need, when we talk about, go back to our roots. There are things we were using before, very effective, how we pass message. People outside, you hear the truth, you get the message before the people at home. Call your family, uh, call your relatives, give them the message, let them pass it on. While the people who are our enemies are dishing out their crap on their television, the real message is going around the village. That's how we are. We, look, we came before telephone. Eh? We came before, uh, 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 before uh, uh, radio. We came before television. We were functional society before those things came. Let's go back and start living our life the way God intended it. And that way you surprise your enemy. While they waiting for you to hear from them, they hear from you. Come on, my people. We are Indiwa. We are not Indomie children. Uh. Anyway. I don't know how much it will come up in A, A J. I don't have, I have A J currencies here that I came back there, I just souvenir to show people what damn freaking Nigeria look like once upon a time, because they will be gone. But I'm going to support Eka people with thirty A Jema. And I will send the receipt through our information minister to deliver on my behalf. They were not. We must continue. We must continue. They were, they were mad.
I think we just pick something from what our minister just said. We have to, the ground root work is really necessary. So, uh, why they are waiting, uh, why the zoo want to hear what we say on air? How the message we get to our people in Biafran land? You know, we can always eh, make a call across and tell them what going on. So, you know, it's a, this is a good way of eh, passing message through as well. Thank you, uh, Honorable Law for that eh, fine insight.
Thank you.
I think we, Biafrans need to work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, um, who the number, your hand is up again.
Yes, yes. So, you know, uh, thank you once again, my, my, thank you so much. I'm loyal to those who are doing great things for humanity, not those who are eh, doing something to show up in a club or in a party. You know, if eh, you know, you talk about challenge, I like challenge in this kind place, you know, uh huh. And he and I, if you're true Biafran man, do challenge how to defend your land. I'm telling you, if I there home now eh. I'm telling you, what did I go take, no, so I mean they do some, I don't know, be say, sometimes I go flash my face for some people who know me. Now, those who know me, they do, because I'm telling you, I'm gonna do my own, so, if I, they go up, they don't know who I go to. Anyway, no problem anyway, because eh, our department, our A P M says something, how can a Biafran be happy this time around? How can you call the safety Biafran, you are happy? Happy for what? Somebody just let me say doing bad day, I said bad day, bad day for what? The bad day, ask the person, are you supporting the defense of our land? He said, I said, if you see who I talk to you, although they know me because I don't hide my own. Okay, your land, your land is on fire, you are doing bad day. Those people who are in the bush there, are they not, because they have not come to a village, eh? Okay, so they know me, if you bite me, the way I insult yourself, they know, you can't bite me for anything, party. Now, okay, because it's not, doesn't necessarily. Let alone where my, my leader, to, to the two leader we have that care for you. Let me tell you how a two leader, how a two leader care for you. Those who protect your life, who give you something to protect your life, not those who give you fish to eat or give you money, but your life is not protected. How about if you die? How will you handle those things? So, that's why they say life force to be for property. So, those who provide you security of life is the true leader. Masnam, Akapam, Nasa, Manekwa. So, that is why it is our duty, task rested on our shoulder, to form that defense forces. If we fail to do so, I'm telling you, we'll be the worst race of this planet earth, because we have made this, this run, we are warned on time for the coming of this run. And eh, if eh, um, how much remain for that in what you talk, say how much remain? Seven, five, uh, uh, hundred A Jama remain, I mean, hundred A Jama, hundred A Jema, hundred eh. Anyways, um, somebody, the, the area of eh, uh, there's something you do last time, the way we talk about the Legatim fundraising. Uh huh. If some project like this, government will tell us eh, how much it costs, then we, we do the challenge on ourselves to raise that money. So, the money of our defense forces will not be touched, okay? If some certain project that you need to be done, we do it.
Include, include the number, please contact the C O S, okay? What you're saying is very interesting. Contact the C O S, that one. You have the C O S number, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, contact him.
Okay, 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 remember, yes, I'll, I'll, uh, uh, D M, I don't have your direct number. I'll call, uh, uh, Minister of Information will give to me, no problem, sir. So, um, pretending that I will support eh, with extra our um hundred A Jema, I don't know what is there, how much is there. I want to put a hundred A J, but let me put it to convert to hundred A Jema, you know, to eh.
I'll, I'll back you up with another twenty thousand A J.
If eh, if eh, this may suit me, now what we go do, we go do, we go do and better, we go do and better, we will do and better.
Not be joke, now me, now, you see this evening, this evening. This is, this is, this is eh, is part of Eka, Eka history, you understand?
It's, no, now so, all part of Igbo land, my brother, all part of Igbo land.
So, you know, when, no, the reason why I don't want to call Igbo land is because when they come out, they will tell you that eh, eh, Eka people are not Igbo. And the other people are not Igbo, this one is not Igbo. A proud Igbo man.
Okay, my, uh, if eh, let me surprise you.
Somebody from nowhere will come and tell me what, full army will tell me who I am as an Eka person.
You see the song where they play that, some way they play that time, I'm telling you, that is a song for my village. When I tell you last time, some people from eh, eh, Gudumigudo and people from my areas, it will be the same, those who not understand them. You know, I would chuck, you know, with that song, there's some way university pray, one, that one, this understand, you know, one during that, I do.
Better rise up. We go do, if I want me, we push them to some, me, I believe in challenges, I believe in challenge. This today now, it can't matter now, it, it can't matter now, they, they my head now, I swear to God who made, who made me. It, it can't matter today, they my head, I go push and push and push and push and push and push and tea, then go see me who close.
Exactly, so.
Eka people to come out and see that eh, they want to do this eh, town hall meeting, so we are going to do it.
Yes, sir. So, Biafrans, let me say just this.
I mean now, I don't see my, I don't see my people here now, eh, freedom for all the year, no, so the year, oku dena ba dey, kiru, hehe, kiruka dey. And they see everybody here now, my people full here like what else? Uh huh, we go let them know eh, eh, me. I know they, I know they, I know, I know they take last in anything.
What the, what the?
I do in life.
What the, what the?
Take the throw and what to, what to, I, I, what to, what to, you want me to cover that what to, what to, with fifty thousand, fifty thousand A J.
There is update for the yes, update, that update now, I they put extra fifty A Jema for that update.
I said, yes, I don't use the, another fifty thousand to back that what to, what to up. Me, Eka land, you can't, nobody from anywhere. History of Kumeku, we must stand, we must defend our land, we must do the same thing our forefather did.
Make for the letter, reach my heart, do, make for the letter, reach my heart, I love you wait to add extra one hundred thousand A J to support to the ground now.
They go, they go no say, they go no say, people, for a casted come out, not be joke. Last last, everywhere go, everywhere go silent, I swear to God who made me, you understand?
See eh.
They say, they say that they, they say, I, I swear to, they say that they pay me for hundred dollar for me to speak. People wanna know where they've come from, on any was that they toxic, then they pay me, me, Ife.
I want to say something now, um, one million, wait, I see him.
Ife, Ife. From on any was from nowhere.
I'm getting there, man.
If you are from a country, you are born in a country, your mother is from a country, rise up, no, tear the table.
See eh, Maaz say something eh, see my people eh, this time around, there's something I want to tell you. If you they talk about Biafran, some people they, they, they do somehow, make you not mind them, you don't know the blood way they inside them, okay? Some people now Biafran by name and lang, and tongue. These thing are those who be Biafran by blood, now they fight them. So, when you talk to some people eh, they behave somehow, make you not mind them. You know, say, I have massacre cost many things, you know, and they still have grandchildren today. So, most of the people where they, where they rule you for so many, so many area, now the product of Abas Maka, Abasanjjo, Danjuma, eh, um, uh, uh, Yakub Gowan and many of them, their children today, that should the way they carry our mothers put for, uh, see what they put for them, now they, they ruled for many states today, now they, now they be top ranking in security waste today now. Many things they go, that is why we need to get Biafran to be able to separate the sharp from the weight. So, when you talk to some people, they don't mind.
Collect all these hands now.
Uh huh. Okay, now, now, now two hundred nine B, my owner, two hundred A Jema total, two hundred A Jema total, so eh, take care. Thank you eh.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. So, Nonsu, have you spoken?
Eh, you know that we are not in nightclub now. Uh huh, so, they can, I'm a reward eh, I made eh, one wobo. So, I'm a reward me here, here really. Heh, so, yeah, so, so, my last eh, kobo eh, you know, low, you can, can puha, asma ka bankiti. Eh, ni ne le 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 eh, di 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 ni, di, di, the flow ni, here well eh, nine. Pa, ya hangi lasti ni, you can mess the eh, who, um, promise ni ke ye, you can mess what. And the last, the last hundred, the hundred thou, hundred thousand A J. But eh, here can me one, I can, I can warn, I can warn you, measure two hundred, two hundred A Jema. Thank you very much.
Make it.
Nonsu, I back you up with another thirty thousand A J.
Thank you guys, thank you, thank you.
Yo, bye, make it, sir, no, sir.
Monali calculator mo, so that I go know, a last class I go know.
Eh, eh, Honorable Mirak, I hope you are recording everything.
So, we come to eh, Biafran baby. Biafran baby, over to you.
Okay, so, um, I'm supporting eh, Faye. With um, oh, to take up the eh, Faye's challenge, uh. So, I'm taking up the Faye's challenge with uh, yeah, fifty, the fifty thousand A J stuff. Yeah, but um, we convert it to, you know, to a Jema, yeah, and uh, put it with um on the receipt and send it eh.
I look at. I'll back you up with another fifty thousand A J. Right and now, me, they give me everything, complete eh. In Kiruka, my person though, so those who don't know in Kiruka, no matter anything, what would they do for this movement? Azara, this movement is concerned, eh, she's very, very truthful person. She's open. Biafran freedom is more important to her than any other thing. Some people may not understand her, some people may not know her. But I can tell you, I, I met with so many people. It's not everything that I will come out here and eh, start talking about what has happened in this movement. I know so much, I know these things that I have kept in one place, until we get our freedom, we can discuss it. But there are so many people that I respect so much, O G, they say someone they call O G. O G in this movement, I respect her so much.
O G, thank you so much.
So much, I respect in Kiruka so much, I respect many people in this movement.
Even though.
I don't come out openly sometimes to talk, understand? But my respect for them, I will never hide, I respect eh, eh, T J Wanto, T J Wanto. I respect Chi, eh, Maazchi Ma. I respect eh, there are many people, I cannot remember their name, I, in private. But our talk is how Biafran will move forward. I respect them so much because their interest is for the Biafran people to grow up. You understand? So, those who think that eh, Biafran freedom, because they have seen me. I come on space, I talk, they say that eh, they are paying me four hundred dollar. Me. Hi, they pay me to speak for my own freedom.
Oh, so you know full of collecting four hundred.
I said, they pay for, they bit more, I don't, I don't.
So, they pay me too now.
I'm going to say something now, eh, um, A P M. I want to take your permission to make this statement.
Now, now, they share the money.
After the kidnapping of a Maazinamdekan, Sonny Akparawa, that you see today. Is one of the people that I know with P M, through P M. That I don't come out openly to speak about, those who know me and see the way I speak, don't know much about me. Sonny knows me, Sonny knows many things. Sonny knows me, Sonny knows many things about me, he knows that I'm not a social media person, I don't come out, I don't like to speak. Sonny was the person that would draw me out to come and start speaking on social media, I don't like it, PM knows what I'm saying. That's why when I see people talking about PM, talking all those nonsense they are talking about, eh, this woman is taking them to this side. I look at them, I laugh because I experienced more than this, I was once reported in so many places, I pray before this thing. So that my friends in in Indonesia, they work up, and they, they will come on other countries, they will come up and eh, eh talk to us. All these eh noisemakers on social media, telling people that eh me, if eh, eh they are, they are paying me before I can come to social media. I look at them, I laugh because those who know me from the community where I come from, they know that I hate injustice. They know that if I want to talk anything about my community, nobody will look back, they will tell them, eh, please, you see this if eh, eh, no, no, no. My main name, they used to know me very well, eh, the day you will come out on social media, this one, this if eh, is my rename. But he rename, they used to know me everywhere, the day we come out, we shock everybody, and people will think about, is this person the person that we have been hearing his voice? For those who know me, they have reached out to me and tell me, ah, I know you are the one talking, I say, but am I lying, they say no. Brother. Rise up and do the right thing, you understand, anybody telling you that eh. Eh, this one will do this, this one, nobody will do anything for us, Mazinamdekan, our prime minister, eh. God send them to us, to liberate us from this evil forest called Nigeria. That is why when I sentence, when I post things and write something about it, people don't understand, where I come out from, I know that Nigeria is evil forest. You understand, but the real name, where they know me, the day when I go, when it go come out for public, you go shock. A car people, a car people know me very well, I swear to God who made me. Forget all these things where we did talk, no, for social media, the love I have for a cap people is too much. The love I have for Biafras, the Ibo's is too much, then my people know me very well, but the time is coming. We are going to celebrate, if that celebrate um become more difficult, many of us will go back home. And do the right thing, those who are alive, who celebrate the remaining things, but the community where I come from, you can't bring me down. Go ask question, you can never, unless I don't follow my community rule. Don't worry, so a car people, anybody from any path that want to support a cast state, if you want to do it, do it the right thing. And I will continue to do my own part, anywhere when the money reach, I swear, I go pay, right, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm the do do, so I saw, um, I'm making because. So but my care admin then, our secretary, mother who's the one secretary Bensef, because I suppose he ensure the record. So, I saw making, so, you know.
What we did with only area I could know.
I believe so, only eh.
Believe so, they have to write it, very important eh, so that to not make mistake, it's very, very important. Who are those, who are those writing the, writing down the money we are pledging here. To the, nobody will make mistake, it's very important.
Admin.
Secretary and admin and the deputy.
I I'm with you, I'm with you.
Oh, are, are you writing down the, the money we are pledging?
Eh, to some extent, whenever it comes to a gemma, I'm not to, I'm not to. Conversant with the amount, a gemma will amount, so, but we are taking down some records.
Yeah, the responsibilities to take down the record.
In this thing, in this, so that if I reach where, are we, with me personally, I will say. Guys, see, see, see what happened, they will tell, eh, eh, guy, okay, no problem, um, let's do it, let's do everything. And make sure that eh, the most important thing, you did the most important thing, please, we want to do it. I want to support a cast state again to another fifty thousand AJ, see, I will do it to the end of this program. As far as the customer, and I'm not going, I don't need anybody, any of my friend to do, to support me, any support that is going to come from any of my friend. I'm going to bring it, but a car land, in Ibo, in a, in a, in a Biafra, and in Ibo land. Coming from my side, we know who we are, we are going to do the right thing, forget about all this noise coming out from different places. So write it down, tell me how much it is, then we'll do the right thing.
Um, um, a casted eh executive, we don't want to hear the total of um. Your fundraising in here, but if eh, if eh, he's asking you of, how much you need meet.
Let them write it down, so that we know it, so I would know the amount one day.
And write it down and let me tell him from behind the scene, don't call your fundraising here, we don't want. Okay, eh, we should be rounding up, please, but we need more people to come up, so let's be preparing to round up. Because time is five spent, we have a Maziya Mobi, over to you, sir.
Yeah, eh greetings everyone, greetings my APM or the cabinet members here, eh, a card mean greetings or if eh. My dear brother Bright, greetings from here, eh Sonny, Sonny, I can little greetings from here, son. Um, Biafras in general, those who are listening to us, greetings from, from here. Eh, because I'm going to support a car with fifty thousand AJ, eh, but I also want to tell our people. Obonah FNM in our land today, doesn't bother you that our people are used as barbecue? The whole Ibo people are used as barbecue, if it doesn't bother you, then you have a bigger problem. You have a very, a bigger problem than eh, than anybody, because you're already dead, you're a dead person. If what is happening today doesn't bother you, you have a very big problem, our people need to rise up and do what they're supposed to do. Eh, Darlo, everyone, thank you guys for coming to us, join the car with their first town hall meeting, eh, may God bless us all, Darlo know.
Yes, um, it's us new. Thank you very much.
Yes, by them, brother, I bet.
They, we are noisemaker, you see eh, eh. You see I am eh, eh, they are paying me four hundred to come on space and on space. Hmm, to seeing you today makes me happy, you understand, because the love. Among us, at the end of the day, they are going to tell me all together what I have pledged here. What you just said today, now, now, I'm still going to support you with another twenty thousand AJ. They should continue to write it down, at the end of the year, they should tell me the everything, I will pay. For her walk, Adadi Orama walk, another thirty thousand AJ. I'm going to give remedies, another twenty thousand AJ, they should continue to write my name, I don't care, but the most important that I will pay. I'm going to give a cast state, the entire cast state, each state for the fifteen county. Um, ten, ten thousand, which is one hundred and fifty thousand AJ, joining together with my money, I'm going to, I'm going to pay all of them, thank you.
If eh, the salary don't finish.
I'm not from empty place, those who know a cast state should know that eh, bam, today, a cap people, once a cap people rise up. There is going to, Nigeria will get a very big problem, I know what I'm saying, and I will, I will work a cap people, I will keep with their spirit.
Let me, let me say something, I think eh, you people eh, for some people. Did not understand that eh, if eh, I prepared for this the cat town hall meeting long before all of you slept and woke up. So, as he's playing the chess card now, is like eh. A surprise to many people, but this is how it's supposed to be, and I love the, the spirit. Every Biafran needs to wake up, because we're one people. And then somebody raised an issue about eh, our communication before, about radio. Yes. Radio will be back to all the provinces of Biafra. We're working on some technical issues, but while all that is happening. You need to remember the reason why we have a de facto government. Community mobilization is where you utilize the de facto. Government do the work very well, ask yourself one very question, if I want to send money to people back home. Or if I want to talk to my village chief, I can easily send someone to connect down to the village chief, right? Or to go and send the message, the message will get down to those people, or if nah, quality if you want to. The message goes, it go down, ah, so please, if we want to send money home. And the way and manner we can send that money, that money will still get home, they will still get the message of the money that has been delivered. How much more the message of liberation? So if we can send money home, and that money can go to the interior part of the community. Mama and Papa, we know they get internet phone, that money will still get down to that Papa and Mama. The way and manner that who deliver that money, or uncle, or nephew, or niece. Or even our peer groups that we played together, those that we went to nursery and primary schools together. Those that we played tells by moonlight together, those we played hide and seek together, some of them may call you sometime, bro, need your help, bro. You know get internet phone, no, nah, thirty three torchlight, now I get, maybe it don't even spoil yourself. But he go use another person TikTok, the day where he wants send the money, that the person go pass that message go be. The way and manner, the message must get to him or her, so let's also utilize these means and avenues. Let us not try to play political correctness when it comes to. Amplifying our number six in our freedom, uh huh, the excuses of radio is. An issue, radio is an issue, television is an issue, eh, mobile phone is an issue, no. I remember when our parents were going to receive their pension. It is one person that will use the radio to get the message, and when they get the message. They will send the message round to all of the pensioners that are within the community. There is a way they will send somebody to go and pass on it, but it is one person is able to afford. The radio to listen to the announcement from the FM of One Nigeria, but then from that one person. There is, is community mobilization network, that they will now send the message to every other person. So all of them need not have a radio communication device, only one person needed to have it. But the mobilization network that they had in the community was very easy to decentralize the message, so. Let us adopt a strategy that will work very, very well, the excuses of radio, radio, radio should be kept aside. Continue to go with that, no radio, I will not do anything, no radio, I will not, okay, when Fulani will come to buy you, you still say no radio, and radio will be the excuse. That you cannot stand up to, do what you're supposed to do, no, do what, do what you have to do, while you make the work easier for other people. That are in other sectors and departments, take care or wreck care, the division of labor. Is there for everybody to check and see where you can fit in. Eka State, we salute all of you, Honorable Ife, the way you are tracking. Eka State citizens out, it is eh very encouraging, and we look forward to seeing more people responding to your call. And we want to see more of Eka State Town Hall Meeting going forward, since the camera's back has been broken. It has not been broken in the morning, it was broken in the night, so this will go down in history. That the camera's back was broken in the night in Eka State, Prime Minister will be very, very proud of all of you.
Eh.
PM is already proud of all of you. On his face, so, let's put the, let it continue to point, I believe, over to you.
Yes, Eka State Telegram, um, OG, you know, I mentioned her name few minutes ago. I see eh, OG, I call eh Rita, I call in Kiruka. Freedom for all, eh, I don't need to call Nonsu, Nonsu is eh Africa, we know that very well. So I don't need to call those one, but eh, when it come to OG, Rita, and eh, Kiruka. Sister Helen, Helen Peters, and eh Stella, Totti Ve- Totti. Eh Stanley, many of them, you know, I don't need to mention their name, um, freedom for all, I'm my guy. You know, no need to come out here and eh talk, there's someone will get Biafra, all of us will, will see each other. I'm very happy that eh, as we speak, my sister. Eh, OG, send me. Eh, hundred AJ ma to support a cast state. I see the love now, they love they too much for you. And I am backing her up with another fifty thousand AJ.
Thank you.
Swear to God, better than the right and now, eh, if you reach one million, I go pay him, if I, if I not pay him, make I bend. And from a cast state, a cap people love challenge, ask question, they will tell you.
That's true.
That's who we are, eh, Ma, you say you went to eh, what is the name of this school?
Baptist girl, so Baptist.
This is Baptist mission now, um, precious, Baptist mission, right? This mission, we have eh.
Yes, now, that's why I represented.
We have eh, um, what is it called, eh, a car grammar school.
Then um, Mary Mount.
Uh huh, yes, now, so you know that eh, Ma, we are still holding our ground in a cast state. Yes.
Yes, yes.
What you did for Ika people today, Chuku Agoji.
Amen.
Eh, eh, you make it, I support you with another twenty thousand A G.
Udaramo.
I pro, I support Professor Chuma with another fifty thousand A G, now.
God bless you.
Thank you so much.
There are many people. It's freedom, we are fighting for freedom.
Yes.
Forget about the one hearing outside is freedom. Your freedom is the most important thing.
Number one.
Telling you eh, we are eh, what is it called? There is some, there is, what they call us, they say, they say me. That I'm collecting four hundred dollar. Hi, if I look at the people talking to me, telling me that I collect four hundred dollar. I, I call some of my friends and I told them that, that I don't mention my, if I, if I mention the name, they used to. Eh, 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 strange you put it, eh, I don't know eh. They say that I'm, I'm collecting money for this freedom.
For your freedom, eh?
Eh, eh, they say they will tell me, why is it that you don't want those to come inside? I say, I don't, I do not say you should come inside, but you're coming inside.
If your dad dilemma is here, I'm using eh, ten thousand Ajema to recognize the presence of our warrior. Our warrior, our intellectual warrior.
Hmm, yeah, these people look at me, me, if eh, if I call my rename here, I swear to God, my rename. They attack, I say, this boy, this boy, now they talk this thing. I know they hide, but I get reason why I don't want show. Leave me, but it can never overrun a townland, I swear to God who made me, even if only me remain there.
Maybe Nafany, Kchuku family with the talk to, good, 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 we're not bad, we're not.
Mention my, my, my family name, where I come from, Ika people, one day, yes, they go, go surprise, see. Ah, this person, my village where I come from, where I come from, the particular village where I come from.
Like you said, your family members, so.
Previa, which they know, but in Biafra movement, the family. So they don't even, I am hiding myself.
Ife, water, water, we move. We move.
So, Ika.
Can I, can I jump in here because I don't have my, I'm, I'm still at work.
Jokpa, Jokpa, eh, eh, Minister, many, many, quickly, do do.
Let, let me, let me, let me hop in here because I don't have much time, I'm still at work. Um, I, I greet all Biafrans and especially eh, my A P M. Eh, and the, the media team eh, eh, Minister eh, eh, Akbarawa. And I also greet eh, Dr. Ruby and eh, I've heard Ife talking in the background. And um, I say eh, eh, there's nothing like history. And I like to be in the history of those who, who supported Ika. Eh, eh, on, on their first eh, 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 town hall eh, eh, meeting. And eh, eh, the thing is when the spirit of Biafra gets you eh, you, you cannot run away from it. And so, I like the, eh, the, the things I'm hearing from eh, from eh, Ife and other people that running there. And so, I, I like to contribute, I like to pledge a hundred and fifty Ajema.
Okay.
To, to, to this eh, eh, effort. And I will, yeah, and I will send it, the, the receipt to eh, eh, Honorable Akbarawa.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, eh, I've been busy at work and I'd like to go back now, thank you all.
I wish you.
Thank you, yes.
Northern Madiokba.
Yes.
There were, there were.
I can't, I will buy, I'll sell about that goes here.
He say, eh.
Okute, okute Biafra. Five thousand A G.
Only just, see care, only just see care, in life.
Yes, sir.
Okay, eh, mercy eh.
Thank you, bye bye.
Bye bye.
This way, okute Biafra, eh, eh, in Ika five thousand A G, and the morning in Kala Backa with ten thousand A G.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This way.
Eh, doctor, please take eh.
Eh, eh, you need, in Ika, eh, born in Ika by eh, eh, woman in Ika by eh.
Yeah, thank you, Ife, thank you. Let's go to the next person. We have our, our, I think, I don't know, she, she had her neck, so she, she woke up. You hear you, you wake up. You call her.
Ah, ah, give me, eh? Now, mune mano make no, ma this one, they greet.
Udo.
My sister, Honorable Ruby, na diada muake negezwa, na mkeke.
Ademua Udo.
Eh, bechi neke. Na eh, anna mna background, eh, na muti love and the joy. Now spark out from um. Oh, under job yet.
Ife.
Ika, Ika, hey, so eh, oh, the otakoku slisi wedi no na.
Yes.
Otakoku slisi wedi, you know, food the, this thing, eh, on, on eh, on eh, enjoy. Na, I'm not a dancer, om bata, om ma bata, na riting kariam. Come but I, because all this kind of thing, I'm not like. Otakoku slede, oh, and down eighteen a trash. And that eighteen eh, well, one of them, okay, so now, so now, now, four hundred. Okay, Biawa, eh, eh, go four hundred, the Kenya go four hundred. Eh, eh, oh, yeah, they could do that. Eh, one of them, okay, now, so many, they're four, now, so many, they're four hundred.
Oh, Ife.
Ife.
Ife, hmm, Ife, eh, 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 oh, they yeah, go four hundred.
Me, me, eh, I, I drop where, I drop where I look for one million, I'm a cook where.
Oh, me, when I look at what eh. Eh, na, I be eh, the, na moto ba moto, no, yeah, they look at eh, 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 we are eh. We are na, eh, 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 me no, yeah, for, now, you know, I would the most important. Eh, in China, you were my brother. Oh, that nine, eh, the back, oh, if I go like eh, yeah, I go lo, why, yeah, me lo, why? Now this eh, Ajema.
Government. The one my idea. So I because I send the. Um switch half life name switch. And the one switch. And I make. So we will acquire this opportunity when I. Do media. On way. You know. Make you know. On send the link so that they can string. Was over no na from. My name is. Then on a. Control. No, no, for good me. Ben no life. On a. Asma that. Then I know. Well, I buy nature. Then I will switch in immediately very important. Yeah, can now go. So for this. I'm money. If if not, you. For. And be. Be. No. And don't. They can just. Now, they who is you when I say. Now, I want on deep. And I had to go tired. In a. Now, I want on deep. But I also. Now, edit. And. Tom was over again. Yes. Ever on I am. And I am. I'm. Okay, can you? Now, I'm. Okay, Papa. And I. I will. Um. If. No, I'm. If. I.
Um. If.
Yes. Yes. Who we if I days. So.
Um.
Ever on. Well, Chichi. I know. Yeah, I but.
If. I. Done. Yes.
I say. Himalaya. Yes. Ever on. Um. On I am. I yeah, the. What I've. I need. They. Yes. You can. And I yeah. You. Why do. Co. Was. When they. Yeah, one. And I.
You said. This.
And I was in. And I can. No, but. To be. But I am. Yes. Now, I want.
Yes. Yes.
And. The. Okay, I can. I see. Because someone. Even. The. Back. It. And you. Do. And you. The first time. And they. May. And they work on. The. Government in exile. First time. In fact, I. He. Oh, oh, go see that. Yes. Yes. You are. Man. Ame. Um. And just. You can. You can. Go. Zell. Moon. So for that. Animal support. With hundred. A Jima.
You. Oh.
And I. Was. Oh.
Oh, God bless you.
Yeah. And my. Support. To. Hundred. A Jima. And then. My. My. We are. Send. The. Eleven. Family. See. Because. USA. Direct. Last week. Sure.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So. Um. If. You see. You. Get. You. Get. You. See. You. Got. More. On. As. So.
I. That. Your. Am. Sir.
And now. I.
Now, if. I back you with another fifty thousand. A J.
Wow.
Thank you.
Emane. Emane. Ki. Ru. Ne. Ki. Ru. Can. Eva.
Um hum.
Now, so. Eva.
Um hum.
Eh. Kelly Peters. No. On one corner. Now. 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 Watch.
Um hum.
Emane. Uh. Ndidi. Name. Mon. Ah. No. Nah. Mon. Ah. Ah. Nah. Space. You know. This. Place. Nah. Now. Watch. Eh. Emane. Casted. Many people. I'm. How. Our. History. Oh. By. I. What. They. Our. History.
Yes.
Bright in Africa. Bright in my. So much. Our. Mini. Eva. Our secretary. Eva. Ndidi. Our. Admin. Eva. Oh. Eh. Admin of. A. Casted. Our deputy. Eva. Man. Yeah. Me. Cool. Nah. Yeah. And I. Got. So. And I. Come. So. I. So. From. Another. Place. And I. My. Co. As. So. By. You. Man. I. Does. It. Change. Yet. To. A. Car. I. Swear. Car. And. Different. Part. Of. A. Car. Emane. Anyway. Different. Yeah. And I. So. Kind. Of. The. General. But.
Um.
Anyway. Different. A. Car. I. So. Sunday. Can. I. So.
That's true.
Eh. Like. Eva. Man. Thank you very much. Ma. It's. Only. You. Can. Uh. Um. This. Eh.
Abo.
Um hum.
Abo. Abo.
Mary. Eh. Baptist. Girls.
Eh. No. No.
I think. They have changed the name. But it used to be. Baptist Girls.
Eh. Baptist. Eh. Baptist. Christian. Baptist. Girls. I'm with their own. Meromant. With their own. Obu. Muda. With their own. And eh. And eh.
Even. Baptist. Girls.
Grama. Soon. With their own.
It's still Baptist Girls.
Yes. Baptist. In. Where. They are. Obu. Muda. In. Where. They are. Meromant. Where. They are. Own. Then. Eh. Um. Um. Eh. What is it called? Eh. Eh. The. The. The biggest problem. A. Problem. In. A. Car. What is the name of that school? If you are going to. Um. Nedi. What is the name of that school? Eh. Um. Ekagrama. That Ekagrama. School. That is the problem of. The hea. The headache of a car people. That's what.
That one is. Uh. Boys.
Obu. Muda. Yes. Boys. Now. Meromant is guess now.
Yeah.
Only.
Baptist. Girls.
So all these other ones. Is. Miss. Miss.
Um.
Eh. Kim. And. One. Eh. You. On. The. Eh. Don't. I. So. Here. Ali. Charlie. Eh. Hey. So. Adadi. Or. Am. Adadi. Or. Am. Me. We. Feel. And. Support. You. With. Speech. You. With. Another. Fifty. Thousand. A J.
Ah.
You know. One thing is that. One thing is that. Eh. Biafra. Spirit. And be. This. Biafra. Movement. That we are fighting for. Let me make it clear to everybody. We have a very big problem. The better we join hands together. Stand as one people. Fight as one. Oh. And defend our land. It's better for us.
As one people.
That's true.
Yes.
We have a very big problem. We have enemies. Who are ready to take over our land. Anytime. Anyday.
Anytime. Anyday.
Biafra. Rise up.
You go. Right.
Me. That is talking to you there. My father. And my mother. They are both from a casted. My grandfather. My grandmother. From a casted. They are great grand. All of them are from a casted. I never. My lineage have never married from another. Part of a car landing. Apart from a. It. People.
The. 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 Man. Who are. Who are. Londoners. And also.
Our place. Where I come from. They know they married from outside.
Um.
Without. They. Car. Blood. And from a very, very strong.
I'm. So. I. Say. Now. There. I did. Selfie.
Now. Now. You're. You're. Leading us. To know exactly. Where. You. Came. From.
Me. If you know everything. If you know my history. I know where I come out from. You gonna see. Before I talk. I will come out for space. I will go talk some things. You gonna see where I come. Me. Personally. My background. Will not fit. Put. Eye. For anywhere. No matter how beautiful you look like.
That very area. So. Did. Very. Selfish.
Now. We know where you. Now. We know.
Selfish. Selfish. Because.
That's. Fish. That's. Not. It's. That's. Not. It's. Not. Your. Family. Now.
They follow the rules.
That's. Selfish. Attitude.
And eh. Our. Way. Of. Life. They don't change it too. No matter. Where. You. Are. Coming.
I. That's. I. You. Still. Selfish. Attitude.
No. Now. It's. Why. Life. So. I. Do. Like. This. You. Don't like. The. Why. They be. Are. They. Be.
Yes.
If you come my place now. You won't mind my people. You must. Know more about us. Because.
Um hum.
All this eh. Eh. Somebody who come from nowhere and trying to change our identity. Trying to change our. Who we are. Will not accept our move. For my place. That is why I tell. Now. So. Me. I know. No. I don't.
Refill their community. That's.
I don't see. Now. So. No. See. Mother. Me. I'm from a background is community that they have never changed any part of.
Yes.
Any single thing about the identity. You can. If you try it in my place, they will punish you.
Yeah.
Those who know me very well know where I come from. That is why when I speak. I speak because I know the history of my land.
Yeah.
We are the only. We are one of the only car people who see today. If you come from anywhere, no matter the amount of. Our people will drive. Will drive you out with your. With your weight. For my place. We don't need your money. But that's our life. Our history and our identity. We must keep it.
Let's. Let's. Let's.
An ego.
But yeah. From. A.
An ego. You know. You can't take over an ego. So let's eh. Let. 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 The people that have fun or blood and good. Best. We are see here.
Let's. Speak. Let's. Speak.
Yeah. I'm. Yeah. I'm. Here.
Um hum. Yeah. Eh. All right. Well. Betty. Over to you. Eh. There. I'm. My. Thank you for working out from.
Thank you so much. Thank you wonderful Biafra. The good people. I love you all. In every world I will come out, I would want to be a Biafra. We are peace loving people. We are not violent. We love peace. We welcome strangers. But they want to vilify us for nothing. It's about one o'clock here in UK. And I thank God for our leader. Mazen Namdekanu. Also thank. Our noble Obatobiye. The man who is taking his challenge with pride. I thank you all. Adazion.
Uh huh.
I'm seeing you.
Well. That.
Ada. Adadi. Or. Am. You are welcome. My noble minister. Mazi. Sony Akbarawa. I love working with you. You are a great man. Do you co-con them? Of our time.
Time.
I love you so much. You are very wise, very sensible.
Eh.
Who are in a very good position and they have something to offer. But. We don't want them to come out openly to speak. That's why I said, please, forget about that side you are going. We have things to do. We have so many things to do to all to replete our land. I'm begging everybody to come out. Because. When the time comes, nobody is going to beg you to defend your land. It's your land, it's my land, it's our land.
Let's continue, let's continue, let's continue. Kiruka, over to you, please, thirty minutes.
Okay, it's just to take up, um, um, yeah, the challenge. Uh, I said Kiruka, so. It's just an additional, yeah, I'll add it to the one. I've redeemed the other one, so I'll redeem this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Kiruka. Well, thank you, thank you.
Rastafarian, it's your time, Rastafarian.
Last time.
Bless the Lord, bless the Lord.
God bless you, you're welcome to Alaka.
Yeah, man, thank you, and thank you very much. I thank you for what you do. Uh, thank you for, I mean, words are not enough. If I start talking now, uh, Barack will tell me, say, make us topic. I mean, no one trouble. It's when me, I want just come drop few words here first of all. I want to say that. See them aiming at us. I beg no fit help us. They are shooting at us. We have lost enough of us. Biafran donated for the convention venue and for the hotel rooms. In the new mandate account under Ngozu. She refused to pay for the facilities and come for convention days. She aimed at making Biafran stranded. So that police would come and disperse them as illegal. That was what Ngozu meant when she said that they expected police somehow. She didn't pay, making our gathering there illegal. Even the hotel rooms. Ogenkere jumped in and paid. So the convention, Ogenkere saved. He made it legal. The police saw that we are not criminals. But the same person who collected Biafran's money and didn't pay, making our convention illegal. If we arrived without fully paying, is now accusing Ogenkere, who saved the situation, calling him criminal. Criminals are quick to accuse the innocent of the crimes they commit. As a judge moves, the dubious ones are the first to accuse. The judge nails it with evidence. Judge investigates, finding the evidence. Biafran, in this case, you are the judge. Are you investigative? I can understand one Nigerian beast being biased judge. But as a righteous Biafran judge knows, the beers are evident. Anyone today that is proud of the Latif Convention should be saying, thank God for Ogenkere, who made it possible. And that only who told us how they dragged him out after being heavily and consistently supporting. Shows that he doesn't show off. He is only adding force to Biafran cause. I'm coming, finishing up. They preferred helping from behind. Who mother dragged him out because they saw the heart. He doesn't speak English, but talks the talk. Jihadis terrorists understand the talk. P M E S N and Maznamdi cannot understand that. Every freedom fight understand that. Nkere may not be speaking in an entertaining manner like our P M, the singer and dancer. Or Maznamdi can, yes, they talk the same talk. It has also been Nkere that you praise when you praise P M for our achievements. Do you know the kind of trust it takes for Biafran Republic Government in exile to make you work with the B L A? Can't be found in one who displays vulnerable Biafran names on air. One who sabotages you, who sabotaged you, you want to crown and call her a queen. And the one who's rescued you, the one you are dishonoring. Meanwhile, Ngozu gives you Jihadis bank, one, two, three. Same Jihadis that say we should not leave. See them aiming at us and beg no fit help us. They are shooting at us. We have lost enough of us. Time now is right. The word is enough for the wise. Because Sabo two words are trying their best to sell. Biafran and supporting car from my own state is, I live in Austria. My own state is Zanistate, but as I say, I want to use a fifty A J M to support the car. I will do it through Biafran, I will send my receipt through, through Australian, um, uh, representative.
Thank you.
Rastaman and Eka people say, Tukukikabiama bless Zanistate. Thank you very much.
Yeah, bless Biafran, love back to Biafra. Bless every heart that supports righteousness and to safety of, uh, preservation of Biafran lives. No matter where they come, universally blessed and loved. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, Nanso, over to you. Victor Nanso.
Watch them, because I see that we have more hands. Uh, you see, here, we are Biafran, we are not in competition with anybody. But we are doing what we have to do because of the defense of our land. Just like everyone of us have said. Uh, even though it is only one of us, two of us, we are going to defend our land. The Kaland is my motherland. I love my people. I love the entire Biafran land. On behalf of Kaland again, I'm going to support with another fifty thousand P G. Uh, to add with what I have donated before. Thank you very much, Mazite. Uh, Mazio Sai, Indo, Emeka, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We are in the round. We're in the round of mode, round of mode. Good number, Johannes, up again, good number. Good number. Good number. Is not ready. Are you, are you late? Go, go ahead, are you late?
Okay. Download, downloading this on our, we appreciate you. You know, uh, many Biafrans do not understand what the job you have done in, in our struggle. At least if it's much for anything, making sure everything is intact, where our leader Mazinand can handle. Prime Minister, someone about one thirty, for making sure the interlands and the coastal lands will remain together. You see. Uh, what a time like this, in this kind of Nigeria predicament, we are the ones standing strong to talk about Biafran. I really appreciate the majesty for coming out today to remember us, to remember us about. You see, we are, we, we the Biafran people, we Ibo people, we are the warriors. And I'm very proud to be an Ibo man. I, no apology, no apology for that. Without wasting time, you can see I'm at work. I've been listening on the ground, the background. I wanted to raise my hand since, but I know, I don't know whether you're gonna call me because of my work. I don't have much to say. I have a lot to say, but I don't wanna waste much time. I'm here to support Eka people, the Eka warriors. To make sure that, to remind you, whatever they are, I know they are our ancestors. Whatever they are. They should come up. I know they're already there. But anytime I remember Eka warriors, this is the kind of thing I want to be. Like I always say, if I'm not abroad, believe you me, I will be inside the bush chasing the Polynesians, because I'm a proud Ibo man. So I'm here to support you guys, uh, Eka State with the sum of hundred thousand A G. Uh, I will, I will pay it through anywhere, either U S B or Africa. But I will make sure I pay it by, by tomorrow before fundraiser ends. Thank you, Biafran. Keep it up. I really love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ayale. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, thank you. Um, I will see you, yes. Over to you.
Yes, um, Mazis. Um, Diko, I'm not supporting Eka on behalf of Alanso. That is, Alanso is going to support a car with fifty thousand A G. And then thank you, Rasta, for that wonderful speech you just gave. Uh, God bless you, brother. That on everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mazze, I'm O B C O S. Thank you.
Good number, are you there? Good number, are you there? It's not there. We're rounding up all.
Maybe he's sleeping now. It's still late for them.
We're rounding up, we're rounding up. Tomorrow is. Tomorrow is our general town hall, uh, general fundraising. And then on Sunday, we have, um. Is it a ludo? Let me confirm, that should be a ludo on Sunday. Allude to Town Hall Meeting. Let's be sure, so that we don't get the wrong announcement.
I didn't see any publication for them to.
There has been, there has been. Tomorrow is, um. Twelve thirteen, okay, on the thirteenth. Yeah, thirteenth is, um, Alludo, that is, next tomorrow on Sunday. Seven P M, Alludo Town Hall Meeting.
Horrible sunny.
Yes.
Maybe we need to post it because I didn't see it anywhere.
No, it has been posted. We just reposted again.
Oh, really?
Long, long time ago. I'm going to share the screen from here now. I'm getting it here from, it was posted out since on the second of April. It's here on Twitter. We repost it again. Yeah, Alludo thirteenth of, um, April. That is Sunday. So we want to see everyone in thousands in Alludo on Sunday. And please, um, the way you have seen Eka State gather here. Is what we want to see from all the forty states of Biafra. Um. You can schedule your town hall meeting according to the availability of the calendar. Don't wait until it is a Sunday, no. Don't wait to say all the Sunday are picked, no. Every little time that you have, you can bring your state together, raise fund for the liberation, do it. Because the Sunday may be already occupied for town hall meeting of another state, then you say, no. There is no Sunday space available. U S Town Hall Meeting has taken it. A Europe Town Hall, African Town Hall, or Germany Town Hall, or U K Town Hall, no. You also have the Saturday, you also have the Friday, you have other days. So, but Saturday is our normal town hall meet, uh, normally fundraising, so don't put anything on Saturday. So that we don't come and breach the normal fundraising. Friday, Thursday, any other day, you can file up for your town hall meeting. Before we call it fundraising, considering where we have entered now, after the declaration of the convention. We try to change some terminologies, so we should be going with town hall meeting. Town hall meeting, we come, we sit down, we deliberate. We are raising fund, fine and good. So town hall meeting, town hall meeting. So like we've been here today, it's not all about the money. It's about making your sense with your people and making your state to have that sense of belonging. Telling the people that you are all in to this Biafran government and your state is not secluded. Yes, because there is this wrong narrative that, oh, it is only this state that is being seen, only this statement. As you are reviving your state, making sure they participate. Everywhere flyers are coming out, you also see the name of your own state. That is how you are even encouraging other people. That were not committed to this liberation. Yes, because many people are on defense. So when they now see someone from their village talking in the Biafran liberation. They now know, oh, oh, we are still a year, oh, let me also go and enter, oh. Just like Ada, uh, Darama was sleeping now. So she had her name in the dream and then she woke up. She had her name in the dream and then she woke up, she said, I must go and answer my name. So I didn't put it like this. I didn't sleep, then they called my name, let me go and answer my name. So that is the joy and the love of having this union of this town hall meeting. Where we meet, we have time, we chat, we plan of other things, we ask ourselves questions, we share ideas, please. The forty states of Biafra in the homeland has been all mandated to do what? Schedule your town hall meetings. If your state executives were inaugurated since Helsinki twenty twenty three October. And coming down to twenty twenty five of April being today, you have not organized any town hall meeting for your state. Or any state official visit that we will come and gather with the P M or A P M or the B R G I. To talk or deliberate or do things in your state, that means you are not taking the government forward, rather you're taking it backward. When you're given a talent, see a way of utilizing that talent to be fruitful, but not to die in your hand. Bring the light out. There are other people that have just been inaugurated into their state admin or executives. Just two to three months, they are able to bring up a town hall meeting. But you, you have been there since Helsinki twenty twenty three. And you are not able to let us have a town hall meeting. It's a very bad moment. So please, work on it and let's see the difference. We want to see every state having their town hall meeting. Not only in the homeland, oh, in Daspura as well. Let your country, let your state speak so that your name go follow. On, um, we see if, if Johannes up, say something so that any Sadazion will give us the closing remarks.
Minister of Information.
Okay. Proceed.
Sunny.
He just stepped up.
Okay, look down, look down, you go see, you go see down, uh, uh, investee. Look down, you go see down, down. Yeah, look down, you go see down.
Salute you, welcome to Eka State. Aloha. If, if Don is here, that means.
Now come up, oh.
Don't take my.
Yeah, Don, come up. What you are listening on mute? You done himself. I'm with you, I'm muted.
Are you sure Don want to speak?
Look down, look down, look down, 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 don't did it.
In day free to speak, not to know whether in day free to speak, based on where.
Don, unmute, you are muted.
Don, unmute yourself, I don't say. I don't send a mic.
They don't send a mic.
Uh huh, you don't mute talk.
See me, you don't mute it now, don't. Have fun now, I greet you.
Good morning from my side.
You know, you don't do magic, carry you come out today.
You don't.
Welcome, aloha, aloha.
But I miss you. I miss you, Don. I love you so much.
Nice. Anyway, we know where would they show now, so we'll meet. Maybe we just wrap up for here because I have no the outside. Is this a bright, bright, bright don't keep us here for over how many hours? You know what?
I want to ask whether the, maybe, maybe people, people see they donate something on the, uh, the listing. As we don't air here, people see they do something.
Yeah.
Yes, we are still making donations.
I know, I know, go for any foreign account, nah, 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 zoo account, so I don't know whether any account they are available.
Just, just call how much you want to donate, then later if I go, hook you up to this, stay that main, make you.
Maybe give me account for, for zoo, zoo fifty, fifty K, nah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, man. Don't worry.
I know what I'll call you.
I go complete it for myself now, seven R K. Don't worry now.
Oh, my, my state, my state.
Well, I don't know, well, I don't know who they talk with, for now, yeah.
My state, whenever, whenever I open my state, whenever I open my state, my state group are there inside. Nah, nah, everything about Ngozu. I don't, I don't want to open them again, because I don't know what they be their problem, so I just like, they, these people, I don't know what they talk, they, they know, they know, they, they know. I don't know whether they're on the right track. I don't, they don't understand what they go on, I don't know.
Oh, those people, they never had a dish. Those people are already.
Okay, okay, let's, let's come back because time don't go. The rest of the talk, but I'm offline.
Thank you.
If you day free now, not before you day free. I would surprise, I would, I would, I would surprise, say, say, don't go, come back.
All right, uh, a very big thank you to everybody. Um, let us give a the mic to. Where is the state admin? State admin, come and say your vote of thanks before, uh, Minister Adazion will close the program. Come and give your vote of thanks to your. Your, your brought home.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Most especially to our A P M. I'm highly don't find that the way I saw him today, I've never seen him in that manner. I saw the spirit of liberation, the spirit of life, the spirit of fighting for freedom. In fact, uh, I've never seen him being angry over an, an art or certain things that happened. I think seeing that, uh, this fool and he are eating us. Like making us as their meat, you know, uh, has instilled into him. And actually, I've never seen him spoke this manner. Um, I highly appreciate you. Your speech has worked in so many things in us. And Eka State have been, you know, under this influence. So, but I thank God that the spirit is one. Thank you, everyone, our A P M and all the ministers. Who have taken their time in spite of the, the tiredness from eight o'clock to this time. Over six hours or thereabouts, being with us in this meeting. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Um, Ife, uh, Onyangu Niniwa here. Bright, DK Konow, you made me proud and I'm so much happy. Uh, it's just that this meeting was just within one week arrangement. And look at how it has come up. And I know that Chukukikabiama will equally give us the privilege to have a meeting like this. It will be more powerful, more wonderful. Um, Biafra is one. And whether you have a different language inasmuch as we had same spirit. Like, uh, in the days of, uh, Tower of Barbe, they were one. The difference was just the language. They were one. They understand themselves. But when the language is divided, the people could not understand themselves. I pray that we have the language of Biafra, the language of freedom. Thank you, all of you that came in. That one language has come. You didn't contribute as though you are not from this state, you saw all of us as one. You have done noble and may God Almighty continue to reward us. And, um. I pray that subsequent meetings, it will be more awesome, more glorious. And what we are looking for in the nearest future, everything will be put in place. And our state, our country called Biafra. Will no longer be in fight, but settling for development. May God continue to keep our A P M, our P M, our Onyandu. And all our leaders and the cabinet members that are working tirelessly. Towards realization of this course. And all the administrators and their executives that are here with us. May God Almighty bless you. Thank you for joining us. We are so much grateful. And may God Almighty continue to bless each and every one of us.
You see.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, then.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Omaja.
Thank you.
I'll see you guys tomorrow.
And also, um.
Let's take our, let's take our closing remarks from our minister.
Mazze, Mazze Chika, Mazze Chika send us a ten A J M. To support Eka City. Mazze Chika, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Minister Adazion.
Thank you.
Bobby Cotton, Bobby Cotton.
Okay, I'm just going to make it short so that people will go sleep. And we give thanks to Almighty God, Chukukikabiama first. Who made it possible for us to be alive, to fight for our freedom. I'm going to thank our Chukukikabiama. For our, for our leader. To our leader. Phere, Epi, Effian. Our leader. Nandi Kano. Mazze, Nandi Kano. Oku, Chuku, Nandi Kano. Our leader. P M, Odogo, Mazze. Samoneba. Njoko. Obatobi. We thank God. For our A P M. We are praying that. The spirit of Biafra will always surround. Our Onyandu and our P M, wherever they are. Our Onyangu Do and our P M, wherever they are. And I know they are surrounding them, that's why they are strong. They want us to be strong too. Our P M, we are praying for you. Everything that we're supposed to be doing now is just anything and everything for him to come out. He needs to be out to finish what he started. Nobody else will finish it but him. He started it. Then his father. Onyangu Do will be there beside him while he's finishing it up. I thank everyone that is here today. All the ministers, I thank you all. Minister of Information, that department, Opunwaka. And we pray for you guys because you, you people are doing awesome, awesomely job. In this uh space, many of you are not sleeping. Van 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 will take thirty minutes from his break, instead of going to relax and drink coffee or tea. He will come and give us word and all this word are giving us courage. Minister of Information will stay on that space. Mazi Fe and the rest of them. Nkiru Stella. Uncle Donamba. C O S. Everybody, all the media. Atadurama will have that fifteen minutes from job and just come and talk to us. Then after he, after she gets off from work, she will be there exposing the disposable. Till midnight, it is not easy. Everybody have their own thing that they are doing. Horrible Mazi Ma, C O S tear. Doesn't sleep, Professor. Chuma doesn't sleep, you are don't know this, some of you don't know this, they don't. Doctor Bryston. Doesn't sleep. You know, Mazi Azu. Too many meetings from one strategy to another. It's only God that will give you a strength to continue. God will give us strength to continue. Then how will I even go down to our general, but also. Gentle, that department, the spirit of Biafra. Will, shall never depart anywhere their foot is touching the ground. Cover them with the, cover them with the spirit of death. The blood that is flowing all over. Follow them and don't care where they are, even if when they are not on duty. Even when they are eating, that spirit of death will never depart from them. Do not let anything to touch them. Do not let any enemy, any group planning any evil. To, towards our land to accomplish their evil. Gathering, Father Almighty, Chukwuka Biamma. Even their body, their soul, their spirit, do not let any kind of illness. As a human being, they will be sick, but do not let it be a sick that will be severe. Let it be just body tired, tired meant. Only let it not be anything that will touch their internal body, their soul. Let them not be weak. Let the blood of our ancestors continue giving them strength. Then I'm going to stop here, everybody that is here tomorrow. Gather again. Let us gather again and do the best that we know how to do. To help our liberation, those that are in our homeland. Please, you should be strong. You should be strong because this, we are doing it for you all and us. But if you are not strong, we cannot continue, but you all need to be strong so that we all, we get this done. And we say good night everyone and we will meet again tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, achieve for me.
Good night.
Thank you, Adadurama.
Good night everyone.
Good day everybody.
Yes.